Recording in progress. We had to call this meeting to order. It's the municipal council work session agenda at 2:01 PM Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. I will name the officials. We have Councilor Becky Bogdan, Councilor George Hanley, Councilor Catrice McKay, Councilor Rachel Whipple, Councilor Travis Hoban, and Councilor Craig Christian.
Gary Garrett.
And Councilor Gary Garrett. Although this is a public meeting, only the presenters and those invited by the council may speak or ask questions unless otherwise invited by the chair. Please wait to speak until called on by the council chair. When speaking, please be sure to use a microphone so that the record is clear and those attending virtually can hear you. Please also be sure to limit side conversations as they interfere with the audio recording. If you need to have a side conversation, please step out of the workroom. It's proposed that we approve the following minutes, January 9th, 2024 work meeting. Are there any objections or requested changes? Seeing no objection, I declare it approved by unanimous consent. Our first item of business is a discussion regarding an ordinance permitting the zoning map classification of real property located at 1730 North, 2300 West from the agricultural zone to the one family residential zone in the Grand View North neighborhood. And this was presented by Justin Wright, our planner.
So this item is one of the here tonight. It's essentially probably in the agricultural picking parcel that they're requesting to have re-zones residential.
And they're essentially looking at this parcel here to divide that into residential single family homes. Proposing to get two lots from that rezon. So that's essentially what we're looking at on this item. Couple of things to note is 2300 West is a private drive. It's not a public street. So their frontage for both these lots would be off of the 1730 North side. So one of the lots would be a flag lot and having access down the side from that. So it's kind of a brief overview. I don't know if you guys have any questions that you'd like me to go over now or cover tonight. And I don't know all the history on it, but it is under private ownership. So it accesses those properties to the south of this lot. So there's some easements that other property owners have on there, but it's not a public street.
It's not part of an HOA or anything. It's just for one lot, one person owns it and made a street.
Person owns it. There's been four other people that own this land down there to also access their property.
Just because I'm curious. So can I put like a street on my lot if I want to? Like, is anyone allowed to put a street on their lawn?
Typically, that's that would have to go through the subdivision process to create an actual private street. I don't, again, I don't know about the full history on this. Essentially, we're typically trying to create public streets that will have the utilities and everything.
Running down those, but unfortunately on this one, it's it's just under private ownership. And I think this property owner tried to acquire that and would dedicate it to the city in the future if they could acquire that, is my understanding.
Councilor Whipple.
I thought it was interesting that they were only asking to divide it into two lots. It's a really large thing and one will be like half an acre and the other will be a full acre. Do they have plans for how they want to use this? Or do you think there will need to be further subdivision of it in the future?
So this is the really new plan review. So the property owners keep that large flat lot there. Okay, and then do you sell out the smaller lots?
He's putting in a tennis court. He wants to import something in his plans.
Okay.
That's what they want.
He wants to do great big things there.
Be awesome.
All right.
Thanks.
Next discussion of an ordinance permitting the zoning map classification of property at 5610 North University Avenue from the agricultural zone to the arbors on the Avenue project redevelopment. And this is presented by Aaron Ardmore.
Hey, so don't know how much you want me to go into this since we just saw it a couple of months ago. Okay.
Aaron, why it's back? Just the difference is there.
So we look at the property, just to remind you, it's at the mouth of the canyon there, currently in those two zones. And I think this is probably the best slide to stay on as we, as we talk about this. So the planning commission loved it, staff supported it, the council even showed support for the idea of it. I think the, the big issue for everybody was the lack of infrastructure, specifically sewer infrastructure on this one. So after the, the project got a denial back a couple of months ago. I believe the couple of members of the council asked for it to come back with the understanding with the developer that he wouldn't be able to pull this one, be able to give me until that infrastructure is, is completed to to serve this and all the other properties at the same time. So a development agreement has been proffered and it was drafted that in your packets. That is one of the issues in that development that, that there's understanding that this one is a move forward. As a project planner, building permits, so that infrastructure is completed. But on top of that, there were additional, there are additional things put into that development agreement that, that were brought up by both the planning commission and city council. Limiting it to the 66 condos. Currently, there's a minimum proffered, there's a minimum of 50% of the kind of, kind of minimum sort of the on the occupied. Parking provided at 2.12 per unit, no more than four levels. And the trail connections to the one with the trail. So there's a number of items that are being proffered by the developer, which I think are the, the keys of providing the customer to come back and see if we can make this work.
Any questions there?
I still don't understand why we're voting on this. If there isn't sewer, it seems like the inappropriate time to be deciding whether they should do it because it didn't sound like it was coming next year, two or three or four, with they have no plan for it. I like, I like the project. I have concerns about the traffic flow and some other things like that, that if there's no sewer, why would, it just seemed out of place to give permission now for something that might happen in the future? Why wouldn't we make that decision when the sewer is available?
I understand, but Ms. Regoje, the applicant, wants some sort of indicated support, giving the zone, if, if the council thinks that zone is appropriate, if this development is appropriate for the land, even if the structures aren't ready, that tells the developer and the city and the neighbors that this is what's to be expected, that he can continue working towards that, continue working towards solving those issues, developing his plans in the interim, if he's got the zone to do it. Without that, if you're making change, there's just too much question for him to, to keep putting time running into this. And I think it's, I think it's a solid practice to identify properties in the city, what the best possible zoning for those properties are and establish that. We've done that in a number of areas in the city of the kind of establishing a zone before there's truly a development plan or a custom plan in front of us. Just because that gives the city, the neighbors, the developers out there indication of what would be support.
So are we giving approval to him or are we giving approval to the land?
We're giving approval to the land, but with the development agreement, it ties him to that development, that concept with the things that is proffered.
So let's say he sold it two years from now. Would it still be, the zoning still hold?
The zoning would hold. I believe you'd have to transfer the development agreement to the, the new parties that are.
Yeah, so the, the zoning would hold in the sense that, let's see, what's it going to? The road.
Pro zone.
So it would continue to be pro A10, but anybody who acquired it could only build what was in the concept plan of the development agreement or come to the council and ask for an amendment to the development. Yeah. Yeah, I, I will vote no on this, not because I don't like the project. I do like the project. We, we need the condos. I like that. I don't like the idea of giving advanced agreement to something that we don't really see, that's not really ready to go yet. I, I, I feel like it's cart for the horse if we do that. And there could be a number of unintended consequences because of that.
Councilor Emily.
Yeah, I, there's several citizens have also raised the issue of the Northeast plan still being under development and I'm quite sympathetic to the concern that we're adjusting the zoning here because we have someone who wants to do something there, but it's the only, you know, option on the table and we haven't yet come up with any other alternative possibilities for that property. I mean, what's that?
I can address that.
Okay.
So I'm highly involved with that, that and Northeast never sign. We are finishing up that land use chapter this Thursday. And what staff is suggesting on this property is this type of use, this type of land use, this type of density in the future land use plan. So I think it, I know that it's been done maybe for several months. I think it falls in line with that.
I mean, is there, but isn't that still a reason to maybe wait and get that plan, make sure that that's all properly, you know, informed by citizen input, by staff input, by city council ratification, and then we can say with confidence that this is the best use for that property and then, and then we can revisit this question at that point?
I mean, that's one option. Bill raised his hand, so he's going to address that.
Well, yes and no, in that you're well aware that all the work is going through sewer analysis and infrastructure analysis right now. One of the things that they asked us to do, I need to do, is to identify those areas where there might be higher density so they can get that into their sewer analysis. So this is one that we would recommend to them with the land use map that we have to finish very quickly, even before it gets ratified by the city council, so that they're already planning for that. Because for us to wait for you to ratify the entirety of the plan for them to continue their analysis just hurts us. It hurts us if land development is trying to take place right now. The other thing we have on this property and a couple others that are on this, kind of in the same situation, there was the places where we have bottlenecks, and we're going to explain this. Gary can, I can, but places where we have bottlenecks, we are hoping that if developers can see that they have zoning and it's the sewer constraints that are holding them up, they may then have interest in sharing the cost over the both impact fees to help solve some of these problems. So that's another reason why we see value in going ahead and zoning ahead of time, even though they know they don't have sewer capacity today. Going to add anything to that order, there's a suspicion.
I mean, I, I, I guess I, I mean, if, if we signaled in the area plan that that was going to be designated in this way, doesn't, doesn't that amount to the same thing?
But they would do that the same amount. They would include it in their analysis, yes.
But you're just saying that would delay us by a couple of months if we're waiting for the ratification to that. Sorry, I should have.
If you want staff to wait until you approve the entire plan, which probably won't be till the fall sometime, then it just delays them finishing their analysis. What we were hoping to do as planning staff is do the land use map, even this month, put that down. So the land use map can go to engineering, they can work on their analysis while this planning staff is working on all the rest of the plan, bring to you. But if we signal on that map that this is going to be this kind of density, the neighbors start to get into account right now. I think that's great.
Yeah. Okay.
Councilor Gary Garrett.
Aaron, neighborhood input on your plan or is it just staff at this point? And now let's take it to the neighborhood? Or do you have members of District One on your committee, on your planning committee?
Exactly. We have a technical advisory committee, about eight to 10 people from, from those neighborhoods that they're helping us with our, our planning process for, we've been working on the existing characteristics in the land use map so far. But yeah, we are working closely with that committee and speed development.
Maybe before tonight's meeting, could you email us a list of those community members and maybe the minutes to your last meeting?
We don't keep minutes, so I, I can give you kind of a review of what you've covered.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Councilor George Hanley.
Well, I, I would just say, in reference to Gary's question, several emails have come from members of that committee saying they would prefer that we wait.
Yeah.
I don't know how many they represent out of a total, but.
Councilor Rachel Whipple.
Yeah, I'm wondering if we went ahead and improved this. Would this be able to assist the developer in either getting or keeping the funding that he's been working together in order to do the project?
That's, that's what I understand. I believe I'll be here tonight and we can ask him that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments? All right. Thanks, Aaron. We'd like to recognize that Mayor Shaw Capuzzi has joined us. We'll now hold a pre discussion, discuss ordinance permitting zoning classification of 1630 South, Nevada Avenue from Public Facilities Critical Hellset Overlay Zone to One Family Residential Performance Development Overlay. And this is presented by Bill Pefferoni.
Shameless, I tried to present this to you in another conference before. That's not happening.
We can make that happen.
I was happy to say, imagine this, even happen.
You spent too much time on this.
You see this cancellation of this.
And you can.
I wish you had seen it.
Yeah, you can also depend on the side of the screen. You can just draw on the screen if you want.
Yes, you're familiar with the proposal, the rezoning, agricultural and general commercial R1 APD. This is a subject property on, so you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on, you can't.
Why do I see you down on State Street? It's okay, Bill. It's little.
Slay Canyon is on one side of the map, one side of the property, Nevada Avenue is on the other.
Is this the right there?
Yes. It's starting to sweat. The entire property is just over 30 acres. This, the lower area there belongs to the city. The upper area belongs to Schofield, or did belong to Schofield family. And one very small piece of property in the middle belonged to an individual property owner, just an individual citizen. As soon as Anderson Development put this under contract with the city, I asked them if they would try to get the Schofield property under contract so this could all be planned together and designed together as one development. I was also worried that if you look just north of the Schofield property, our townhomes and for years I've been worried that somebody would put Schofield property in a contract and then ask to continue those townhomes across that same bench, which we didn't want. This staff is a member of the plan of the staff was really trying to advocate for single family homes on this property since 2016, I believe. The existing zoning is the agricultural zone and the public facility zone. And then across hatch you see over this is the Critical Hellset Overlay Zone. As I referred to this earlier, this is the southeast neighborhood plan, which calls for this to be R1, single family homes and open space. The R1 zone, as developers have come and asked about this, the staff has encouraged them to not exceed four units to the acre. And the reason staff suggests that is four units to acres generally consistent with the R1A zone. The zoning to the north is LDR and R2 PB, both of those are higher density than R1As. However, to the south is R16, so higher density than R1As. But this little area right here, it's R110. So the R1A zones seem to be a good transition between all of those different zones. That just makes sense to the staff. So that's why we encourage developers from looking at this to just don't exceed four units to the acre. Chair Ruhl and I have been very involved with Anderson Development in many meetings over the last two years to try to come up with a development plan. Anderson Development actually has been amazing with cooperative and taking staff suggestions. Over the years, we've had a lot of developers ask about, about this property and what are the projects on it, but all of those projects have been multifamily or townhomes. Before Anderson Development, put a pen to paper to start the design, we gave them kind of four instructions. And if any of these were wrong, this is resetting them in the wrong direction. This is upon them. But I said it has to be single family detached housing, don't attach any units. Don't exceed that four units to the acre. Engineering is out of it. You've got to plan for the debris flow that goes through this property and plan for that and incorporate that into your plan. Then I'm also saying try to be as price sensitive to that costly housing as possible. If you have a choice, whether you can do a million dollar homes or half million dollar homes, in my interpretation at meetings, then you probably would prefer the half million dollar homes. In regard to the debris flow and that natural hazard, it's unusual for a developer at this point in the approval process to do a geotechnical study. Those are expensive, they're labor intensive. Most developers are going to edit out the zoning before they spend the money on that and staff has, has agreed to that. In this case, Anderson Development, when they had us, made the geotechnical study on this and turned that into the engineering back in February. And it showed no service hall rupture, it showed no hazardous soils, it showed no local faction. There's no 30% slope on the property, so really it's just the debris flow that had to be mitigated. I'm going to show you a plan and it kind of addresses that. So the plan Anderson ended up bringing forth is for that 110 detached units. Now, if they had just followed that four units to the acre on the 30 acres, they could have had, or asked for 120 units. They also could have asked for bonus density under the Performance Development ordinance. For Performance Development ordinance, it gives you the flexibility to cluster housing, but if you're discussing open spaces, this has, it gives you bonus density. I think the bonus density would put up about 130 units area. I've talked to the city council previously about clustering housing and how that can really help with the economics of the project. The better you can cluster housing, the more cost effective it is to develop subdivisions. So the cost of infrastructure per lot comes down if you can cluster. In my opinion, the four things that are causing our housing crisis are the cost of land. The land is costing $200,000 an acre for farmland out on the west side, undeveloped farmland on the west side is up in that range. That's pretty expensive. When the cost of sticks and breaks, the cost of building houses, $300 a foot, square foot. When the infrastructure costs are higher now than they have ever been, when interest rates are higher or they are. That's why we're in the housing crisis ring. Cities and title processes and our impact fees and all of that, all the things you can constantly blame on a city, my opinion is probably one or two percent of what that sales price. So to blame this housing crisis on cities when we control one or two percent seems really backwards to me. But anyway, clustering the housing with the infrastructure saves the development money, which allows the houses to be sold to us, but it also is beneficial to the cities. Once he dedicates this infrastructure, he's got a warranty for a year. After that year, the city takes it over and we update it. The more houses you have per linear foot of that infrastructure, the easier it is and cheaper it is for us to maintain this for the next hundred years. And that's really what we're committing ourselves to every time we approve a subdivision. So it's good for ordinance. Initially, we asked Anderson Development to front houses on Nevada Avenue at the bottom and Slate Canyon here, with driveways in back, so we could avoid the back facing lot and barrier wall scenario that's kind of sterile. Back facing walls are graffiti magnets. Plus in Provo City, the individual property owners are supposed to maintain their park strip on the other side of that wall. If you live in the middle of this block, would you drive around the block to go maintain your park strip? Probably not. Most, a lot of people don't. We have problems with that around the city. So we said, try and run the houses out on the streets. What about the driveways in back? And we wouldn't have driveways out on the streets. As we listened to all the struggles about this site canyon drive parking situation, we decided that's probably not a good idea. Because even if you put the driveways in back, if the front door is along the street, there's a tendency for people to park on the street, not on the front. If they have family members and kids. Lots of Anderson Development got into designing this. They realized that the grade of the property, the slope of the property made that more difficult. So the property in the flattish area, flatter area is about 10% down here. This area appears 15 to 16%. 15 to 16% is pretty consistent across the upper area. If you flatten lots along the roads enough to get a front door and a driveway on that lot, it exacerbates the grading problem as you move up the property.
What is Slate Canyon Drive? What is that grade? Oh, the, the east end, not the west end, east end, the.
What's the gradient?
Yeah, yeah. Cause you were saying that this is like 15 to 16. Can you read my, the.
10 to 15% grade, right? So how does that compare to Slate Canyon? Just so I can get a visual. Because those driveways are kind of steeper.
I don't know. I'm just hearing those, but I can tell you that the 30% slope on this area starts above the subject property. So it's 10 down here, 15 to 16 in the middle, 30% east of the property.
In the undeveloped.
Right? Off our subject property. Anyone engineering my.
That's accurate.
But what is that? What, how does that compare to Slate Canyon Drive, Gordon? I mean, would there be anything on this property where these housing units are compared to Slate? I'm talking about how, he's saying how you can get a flatter so you don't have those steep driveways that grade, that steep grade on those driveways is how they're engineering it. And so I'm trying to picture in my mind, how does that compare to Slate Canyon? Are these going to be?
Slate Canyon driveways?
Yeah, those ones on the east end.
We haven't, yeah, we haven't seen the grading fine, so.
No, he, she means the existing driveways on Slate Canyon. Some of those are steep. I don't have any idea what steep any of those are.
And how that would compare to what he's saying in here?
I, I don't know what these will be. I suspect with the shorter, the only way you do long, I, I, I don't know. But I suspect the building code will force them to do them within standards.
But this has been designed to reduce grades of driveways.
Yep. So explain that, Bill.
So, so the entire property, the contours go this way. Okay, it's going uphill. Okay, contours are going this way. That's why the streets are oriented in this direction. And that's why none of the streets go perpendicular to the contours. Because if you put the streets perpendicular to the contours, you have the most cutting and filling. And the critical hillside overlay zone is such to minimize cuts and fills as much as you can. A lot of the provisions in that ordinance encourage you to reduce the cuts and fills. So even the streets that aren't north-south, they are going in this direction to help with that grading rather than going in that direction, which exacerbates the grading, cutting and filling problems. Okay? I'm going to show you a cross section of it that's going to make this much more clear. And the reason I asked Anderson Development to create that cross section was just because of this issue. I'm going to come back to these things. Let me go back. That's the contour of the land. The green line is the finished slope. The yellow line is the existing slope. But you can see how the houses themselves help to act as a retaining wall for the slope. Every one of those red lines, the red lines being shown here. So that's Nevada Avenue right there. So the house itself is two stories in front and three stories in back. One story in front, two stories in back. So the house itself sits into the hill, that's as a retaining wall. You can see that we can put a pretty flat driveway on these. Okay? The other thing that's very telling about this drawing is that right there. That is the debris flow. That's the debris channel. It takes that 500-year debris flow event, very rare, very extreme debris flow event. That takes it through this property. You can see that dark green is the debris flow. That's that channel I was just pointing to. And it takes the debris flow across state canyon and into the park, bicentennial park, which would be used as a test basis for that. Again, it's a 500-year event. That's something that we know is going to happen very often. These are the homes that are being proposed. The staff is very satisfied with the variety of homes, with the ramblers and two stories. We liked it. There's not stucco in this. We like that it's hardywood siding, fiber cement siding, hardy plank.
Bill, just quick question. Sorry. Those homes all have the garage on the front, so these would be different, right? What they're doing?
No, they're all in the front.
They're all front loaded now. Because we told them not to front turns onto the streets, everything is now front loaded.
So the, the driveway and the front of the house is facing east? Okay, I think.
So everywhere you see a driveway, that's the front of the house. And just again, to make this clear, the square you see isn't the house. The square you see is the building envelope. So that's everything that you can build on. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot minus the setbacks. Building envelope is a lot minus the setbacks. So homes fit within those boxes. Those boxes aren't houses. Okay? This graph, it kind of makes that clearer. The chart over there shows you the lot size and the building envelope size. Those squares are the building envelopes.
Heard him say the opposite.
Any other questions? So although it sounds like we're not sure why we applied the critical hillside overlay zone to this property, since it's by our ordinance, it's defined as available. It doesn't have 30% slope on it. It doesn't have ridge lines we're trying to protect. It doesn't have, it's the soils. In spite of that, there are many provisions of the design that we took into account. The provisions on the hillside overlay zone, reducing of cutting and filling. Not putting streets that are perpendicular to the grade. That's why the street is as long and you're going as north-south as you see them go. Their, clustering the housing is a requirement of the zone. So we've followed many, many provisions of that critical hillside overlay zone.
George Hanley has a question.
Sorry. Bill, when we met, Becky and I met with you a while back about that, and we talked about the critical hillside. You mentioned that that was really the limits of disturbance, which was the sort of primary disqualification for this property, why it didn't fit with the critical hillside overlay zone, and that that was an issue that you felt had been unaddressed with the original ordinance and that probably deserved an amendment in any case. And so I, I wanted, I, I just want to know your thoughts about whether or not, and maybe the council at some point, we can weigh in on this, but you know, does it make sense, as we discussed informally in our meeting, amending the critical hillside overlay zone first? Or simultaneously, I guess, so that, that it actually is within the limits of the critical hillside overlay zone? Part of that is just kind of a semantic difference, maybe. I mean, you're, you're essentially telling us that this is in, in harmony with the, the major issues related to that ordinance. It just, you know, feels a little unsettling to me that we're, you know, sort of here we finally have a project that's in the zone and we're kind of already seeing it as not fitting. And so we're saying we got to rezone it and get rid of the overlay so that it doesn't apply when maybe it should be amended and it should apply. And maybe that gives the public a little more confidence that we're meeting those standards. Anyway, I don't know if you've thought more about that. And I regret that I, I didn't think to mention it yesterday when you and I spoke, but that's still something that's kind of lingering in my mind.
Anderson Development will be at the meeting sites and they'll have their own presentation today. I'm sure it's their preference to just take the property out of the zone. Possibly that's their preference. What Mr. Hanley and I had talked about previously was the provision of the hillside overlay that's really causing a sparring of this design is that the ordinance says, once you create a lot, only 40% of that lot can be disturbed. Only 40% of that lot to build a house. That's because when we wrote the zone, we really anticipated the smallest lots we probably get would be 10,000 square feet. We really wrote the zone with some property in the northern part of the city, you know, in mind. We didn't, we didn't anticipate lots of this size, which these are 5,000 square foot lots, sub 5,000 square foot lots, and you're going to disturb 40% of that. And you have a really small building envelope, right? So that limits the disturbance provision of that code is giving us some trouble.
What is the percentage here?
That's probably 60%, 7%, something like that. On these smaller lots.
I mean, but having said that, maybe, maybe the critical hillside overlay zone should remain with that.
I think it should remain with.
With remain with that limit of disturbance percentage so that it does in fact continue to hold hold other areas of the city to that standard. But, but in this case.
So you and I discussed.
I don't know.
What you and I discussed was that perhaps the hillside overlay zone should be amended to say, if your property doesn't have any 30% slope, if it doesn't have any ridge lines.
Then you're not subject to.
Then you're not subject to all of these same provisions.
Yeah, that's.
Or maybe we just put a more general sentence in there. It gives the city council the discretion to deviate from any of those standards should make sense given the use of property. I kind of like that general wording better because when now, the next time we have something, something else is going to come up, and the next plan, something else is going to come up. But I'll bring the wording back by you. We'll process that amendment. Anderson Development would like to know whether or not they're going to get the zoning. They'd like to be able to move forward with the zoning, even if we're going to come back and and then the hillside overlay. If we did that, they would be able to move forward with actually building homes until the.
Overlay is. Yeah, I, I think my biggest concern is just that, yeah, we would set a precedent that it just ends up being this movable obstacle that we keep moving out of the way whenever we want some development to happen and it doesn't actually have the teeth that we wanted it to have. So I'm, I'm open to that personally. You know, if you have some language that we feel gives, retains the integrity of the overlay zone, continues to so that it continues to function as a deterrent against the kind of developments we don't want in the foothills. But gives us enough flexibility that in, in a case like this, we can, we can say it, it qualifies.
I think we'd expedite this one, right? That'll hold it up if we wait for an amendment?
Well, he's saying no. I thought you said.
Like, being smarter is to take this out. It's not a 30% slope. No, what's, what's best?
Well, what's best is defined by you. What all of it says is best is taking it out of the zone. What George is saying is best is that makes him nervous, so amend the zone. What I was thinking is that approve this plan subject to amendment coming back to you on the hillside overlay zone. So the developer realizes he's got a green flag from you to move forward, but that amendment is going to have to take place.
And that could be relatively quickly, right?
It could be, yeah. In fact, you've already dropped the slide. First meeting in September. I'll remember in July.
Counselor Christensen.
I was also just going to say, I think George Wiggs have some very good points and I hope that we can accomplish that. I think it, again, this is the first time we're, I'm aware that we're really using the critical hillside overlay. The thought of, let's, let's let the council just not do that. Let's, let's find a way to work. I like the project and I also really like the critical hillside overlay and the parameters it provides and the intent of that overlay. So I disagree.
That's very good. Then we'll, staff will proceed in that direction. That's essentially my presentation. There's a lot of favorite questions about these or anything else that you have.
One question I did have, because of Slate Canyon, I've been really working into garages and driveways. And remember a few months ago, we changed an ordinance where you have to be two and a half feet from a sidewalk? Your, like a vehicle can't, just for side of, side of line and safety. So I believe in our ordinances, driveways have to be 20 feet. So that really means the vehicle will only be, what, 17 and a half feet? Which is not practical to have, like, most vehicles are longer than that.
Are you referring to the clear vision area? You said. So I believe this one has, you're referring to is a clear vision area for height of shrubs or whatever it may be within the driveway triangle. It's not, it's not a linear distance, but a height distance of, of shrubs adjacent to a driveway or road.
We just passed it. And it was vehicles and trailers. It had to be.
Yeah, the trailer ordinance, that's Scott Johnson, take care. But was that, did that apply to automobiles or to trailers? For my understanding, it was just trailers.
Just trailers?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I still think we have, like Slate Canyon showed us that there's a lot of vehicles that did not fit on their driveways. And their driveways have the minimum of the 20 feet in our ordinance. So I do think that tells us that they're not quite long enough. And that, you know, if we're always going to, because people are going to do the minimum usually, right? And so I do wonder if we need to make our driveways 21 or something, or to make them more funky, they need to be functional. And a lot of people here drive big trucks or SUVs or so I do think that's something we may need to consider. Counselor Christensen.
I have a quick question. You said that impact fees are maybe one to 2%. What, what would be the percentage of the land impact? By doing this, you're saying we, we help with that overall cost. What kind of percentage would that be?
Not sure.
How much is land in how homes sell? It's usually 25%, 20%.
Improved lot value.
Yeah. So I'm sorry I didn't ask my question very well. You made a case for the smaller lots. It, it actually helps the home be more affordable, much more than the impact fees. Impact fees were one or 2%. Are these, is this 5%, 10%? That it helps in terms of the affordability of the, the lot?
I think you're linking it 5 or 10%.
Okay. The other question was, and you don't anticipate any, any over parking issue that we just went through on Slate Canyon? And, and why would this be any different than Slate Canyon?
Well, I guess I'm not sure. Slate Canyon is a collector class route.
Yeah.
So that's why we have some of the problems we're having on Slate Canyon. These, all these subdivision streets are interior to the subdivision and they're just normal subdivision streets. So I'm not sure. So I'm not sure in person why we care about people parking on subdivision street that's their subdivision, but that's just my philosophy. That's people I know get really excited over parking.
Again, may people have.
I don't see people from this development parking out in Slate Canyon because it's so interior and slur. And I don't see people from like Slate Canyon parking within this development. But these are qualities.
Is this Slate Canyon denser? Isn't Slate Canyon denser than this?
No, it's the same.
It's the same density?
No, I think Slate Canyon is denser.
I thought it had ten feet between.
Yeah, but Slate Canyon is R two P D. I bet that's five or six feet to the acre. This is under, this is three point six.
Well, it's only that because you've not developed another land, right?
Right, the question was density. You were talking, he's asking density, you're talking design.
Talking design, like, I mean.
Talking street frontages and it's talking density.
So is the developer open to like larger garages than rather, is it, is our code a twenty foot by twenty foot garage? Yes, like the twenty-two, so we probably need to look at that as well.
I think so.
Um, is he open to maybe a ten percent decrease? Like throughout the project, so they're not so close together, so you have maybe fifteen feet between houses instead of ten?
Well, let me mention that because I'm speaking to the developer, but I would hate to see ten lots go away when we're we can just spend the lots as we can get.
One, one related issue that we talked about was the visual appearance of the street on Nevada. Um, the visual appearance of the development that's right adjacent to across the street on Nevada, the fifty-five plus neighborhood, I don't remember the name of it. But if you guys know, when you drive up Slate Canyon Drive, it's totally undeveloped, dried grass, it's hideous and it's this huge wall.
Steel jail sites.
And then there's, yeah, it looks like the new jail site in a way. But then there's sort of this block of houses that all look very uniform. And then, of course, you you know, you have similar kinds of issues with the uniformity and density elsewhere on the street. So I, or at least up Slate Canyon, I was just worried about the visual aesthetics of seeing that Nevada street. A little less worried about what it looks like on Slate because it's only a portion and there's a road there that kind of breaks it up a little bit.
There's a little bit of air loss.
They did show me um the Traverse Neighborhood Development that has, you know, very nice landscaping in 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 front, which they're proposing to do here. Um, but I would like to ask them to show us some visuals that could be digitally created so that we could have a really clear sense of what that actually would look like. And I think what what Counselor Bogdan's um wondering about, I mean, I think I'm persuaded that if we, if if somehow we reduce the total number of units and there was a slight increase in the space between the homes, it wouldn't necessarily change the visual as as significantly as would be ideal. Um, but if there were a few units that were just dropped out altogether on that Nevada street, um, uh, and they do have rooftops that vary, so they don't quite look as um
Uniform.
monolithic as, uh, 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 uniform as it, as it could. Um, that might be, you know, that might be something that I would be interested in, even if it meant lowering the price, the selling price uh enough so that they didn't feel like they were sacrificing the profit margin and we didn't sacrifice the price point. Um, because reducing the number of units runs the risk of like the price point going up. And um, in my conversation with them, they were, they were sort of not unwilling to do that, but they were kind of issuing that concern that we may end up with a price point that's quite a bit higher if we reduce it too much. Anyway, so there's some slight flexibility issues there that, you know, make me want to look a little closer at this, get a sense of what that visual could look like and and, you know, I want to keep having a conversation. I just don't know that I'm personally ready. I, well, I am not personally ready to vote on this tonight, but I think we we ought to have this conversation with them tonight and then, you know, maybe hopefully we can get some more information and some more uh reassurances about a couple more things.
So I have cautioned the developer that that aesthetic from Nevada is going to be an important issue for them to need to address. So they should be prepared to address that to in the meeting tonight. There have been downtown projects where we've been very worried about how a building would look in context with the rest of the blocks. So we asked the developer to give us a rendering showing what the finished building would look with the surrounding buildings. We haven't done that on a suburban project like this, but it's the same idea. I think you're suggesting you'd like to see graph of what this or their solution would look like from Nevada Avenue. That's pretty reasonable request, yeah.
Is that something they're bringing tonight or you don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
That's where the eight foot trail is, correct?
Yes.
They, they sent us a video which, if they would like to, they can show us tonight.
Well, the video they showed me was of the Traverse Neighborhood. It wasn't a digital recreation of what this would look like, which was helpful.
I mean, it gives you like.
I mean, it's sort of a helpful way to re- realize that, you know, of course, the Traverse Neighborhood, the trees are all fully developed and, you know, has the advantage of, you know, ten, ten years, what it'll look like in ten years, but it, you know, anyway.
That kind of represents what that Nevada Avenue landscaping would look like. This isn't showing you the houses at all, what you're referring to. But it is showing you the landscaping, this trail and the changing grade. And the thing I do like about this is that this would not have a back facing barrier wall. If there's fencing there, it would be semi-permeable, so it would be this solid barrier that would be hidden with landscaping. But anyway, it needs to address the, you, what you want to see is the house, right?
Yeah.
Counselor Whipple.
So what, what I'm, I'm understanding is that our, our zoning that we have now, the Critical Hillside, isn't entirely perfect for the physical features of this property. However, because that's been in place, we've gotten a really good design that takes into account the, the landscape that works well, that probably we would not have gotten if we didn't have that code in place.
Uh, it certainly helps, yeah.
Okay.
That performance development, the reason they're asking for the PD overlay is because that gives us the ability to cluster the way this is. But it certainly has helped, yes.
Okay. And then different things that have been suggested by neighbors or that counselors would be considering like increasing the length of the driveway, increasing the size of the garage or increasing the setbacks. If I understand correctly, all three of those things would have an effect on the cost of construction and then on the final cost of the houses. Um, do, is, is there a super handy little chart that says if you add this much concrete, the price goes up by this much? Or if you add this much square footage to a garage, you lose this much from your home footprint or the price goes up by this much?
Because we have actual home plans on this, I think that the Anderson Development can answer those questions.
Okay.
Could be prepared to answer those off the top of their head tonight, but because we have the product we find, it makes it much easier to answer those questions.
Yeah, I just.
And that's the trade off. To increase the size of that garage, you just increase the price of the house or you decrease a little bit of square footage to increase the size of the garage.
Right, and those are are huge trade offs. Um, and where we, we need housing and I, this is not affordable. It may be attainable for people, but the more we increase the price, the fewer people for whom it is attainable. And that concerns me, given our, our priority to focus on affordable or attainable housing for people in our city. I don't want to be using the government to add hurdles that will add to the price tag for our homeowners. And this seems like we're just trying to make these units more expensive. I'll, I'll stop there.
I don't think it's more difficult. It's more of a lot of things, like, I talked to somebody who has been complaining about their two cars jumping in the garage, they don't have doors. They cannot park in the driveway, the vehicles help it, it's a livable thing. The, the fact of long term home occupancy, right?
So I, I think if you're choosing to buy a house, you see what it is when you buy it and you can make other choices like the size of your vehicles and how many vehicles you have um consistent with the physical property you've got, right? If, if you know that you can't park a boat on your property and you want a boat, then you're going to either not have that property, not have that boat, or find a place to park your boat. Um, and, and these little things, like I, this is something that I really have a hard time wrapping my mind around. Because I live in a small house without a garage. We've never had a garage and it's completely livable and it's completely delightful. And because we're in the old Pioneer Neighborhood, the houses are close together, which makes it more walkable. You're closer to your neighbors. It's, it's a more lively and vital community. And so the things to increase distance between houses separates our neighbors more. Like, those are harms to building a sense of community. Um, and I, I understand that my perspective on this is, is different from other people. I'm sure a garage would be super, super nice in the winter. It would be so nice. But it is, I can only imagine.
To me, to me what you're wrestling with is what developers go through when they try to design this. Personally, I feel like when you're trying to design a subdivision, especially something that's large, it's a huge balancing act. You've got these goals and policies of the city, you've got the zoning ordinance, you've got engineering standards, you have the realities of the marketplace, you have the price point you're trying to hit. You're trying to balance all of those things and come up with something that you can build at the end of the day and actually make a profit on. So you can do the next project and it's hard to balance all that. That's what Anderson has tried to do with this in that they're saying a hundred and ten units gets us the profit margin to move forward, but they'll need here for the hundred and twenty or the hundred and thirty. But this is what it's taking to make it work. So yes, all those things are always on the table, but it's a balancing act.
First, I'm not worried about that because there's plenty of affordable or attainable housing in that neighborhood. It'd be great to have something that people can actually stay in and live in. But my question is, is what, what are we going to do with that open space? What protects it from being built on in the future?
It's part of this development plan, dedicated as open space either to the city or in the HOA. It's, I mean, the developer came in five years from now and said we want to build on that. Frankly, they've been a lot of smiles out of the planning staff.
So there's nothing on the deed or anything that restricts it from being.
On the deed, it's either going to be, I mean, right now, there's negotiations going on with Dan. There's going to be partial maintenance, whether the parts might be dedicated and they'll take it or whether Anderson's HOA will take it. But either way, it's going to be tied up as open space through the plan, through the subdivision plan, which means you don't need a deed restriction because the plan itself, as it designates as a limited space, that's going to be the scripture. So you can definitely enter it now. So they can, you know, it was asked or whatever, they can ask to build on it, but it's not going to be on first face.
Okay, the second question I had was, we get a lot of questions and concerns about Nevada Avenue, especially with it being right there by the school. Can we address how this would not be an issue for the school zone? Gordon, do you know anything about that? I mean, they're, they're worried that, they're saying that they get all these studies done and people are going down really, really fast down the hill and it's created a huge issue for the school. And so now they're worried about the additional traffic on the schools, on the Nevada Avenue itself.
That's the school right there, or there's the entrance to the subdivision right by this way. So, so we looked at this from a traffic standpoint and after looking at it, we feel like the streets that are around it, western build.
And the infrastructure would support this additional trips into the area. So that was our analysis of that. Um, will they be good drivers that come into this subdivision? I hope, but we don't know that. But right now, that subdivision doesn't pose a traffic impact that would be significant or detrimental to the neighborhood. The roads anticipate at least that much traffic or even more.
Well, it's the school they're worried about, not necessarily the neighborhood.
Yeah, so the school again, if they're, it, it's a subject to how the drivers are, not the volume or the location of the roads. So it's, we anticipate fifteen minutes in the morning, fifteen minutes in the afternoon, that it's going to be horrible traffic around that school and that's going to be fine the rest of the day and all through the week. But those fifteen minutes are going to be absolutely atrocious with or without this subdivision. And and it's going to stay that way forever. Anderson Development is in the council chamber. I just got a text. If you have a specific question for them, they'll, happy to come in.
Counselor Henley.
So uh, in the, I know there's been conversation and this has been mentioned publicly that the city would use the revenue from the sale for Bicentennial Park. Um, can you elaborate on that a little bit and maybe help us understand? Because there is also a city property to the north of this that we purchased some time ago. Um, next to Slate Canyon. Um, there's um a wonderful trail opportunity that I actually rode on uh this last week and then got rain dumped on me, that squall that we had in the, anyway, uh, it's kind of a big adventure. But we, we, we were riding from essentially um uh Provost Elementary up to this point. There's actually, and maybe Gordon knows about that trail, um, but there, there's an opportunity to have a really nice connector uh trail system. We've got this property to the north that we're still trying to figure out what to do with. And then Bicentennial Park has some property that can be improved. But can you just give us an idea of A, what has been promised? Um, and B, what still might be on the, on the drawing board if we, if we want with that revenue?
I can't be very specific, perhaps Mr. Anderson can, but when this was put under contract, there was discussion among the staff that this funding would go to the Bicentennial Park and this is the last part of that. But it was only a kind of high level discussion. I don't know if you know more than that.
Yeah, I think at this time I was assistant director for recreation, but still around in that area. So it even went through somewhat of an early design with the neighborhood. And so I think that neighborhood thinks that any sale of this would be designated towards the expansion of Bicentennial Park.
And we're talking about the, the portion that's above, up the hill.
Right.
Where the, where the Frisbee Golf area is. I mean, there's Frisbee Golf everywhere, but it's sort of below, yeah, it's to the.
It's across, yeah.
Across the street to the west.
The undeveloped that actually connects up to Bicentennial.
Um, but is that, I mean, I guess I don't have any sense of price. I don't know what money we're talking, what kind of money we're talking about nor how much that would cost. I'm just wondering if, if we can get a twofer and we improve and finish Bicentennial Park and maybe we put some funds toward um improving uh access to that property below Slate Canyon and um advance that a little bit as well.
That would be a great day in the construction industry, but it seems like
It's gonna, it's not enough.
Design funding and depending what the, what goes on with the neighborhood design. Originally, I think the design that two baseball fields, that's outdated at this point. It's really not needed as part of the plan. So we'd be looking at this as added neighborhood amenities and, and trying to add some of the same theme that we're looking at, say Slate Canyon possibly. So that's a whole nother neighborhood process.
Okay. But is that, I mean, are we okay to be, I mean, I just, I, I'm, uh, there's language in the packet, so I assume this is public. Is the soft promise, is this, uh, I mean, what's the status of this um commitment that we've made to say we're going to use the revenue in this way?
Nothing contractual, nothing contractual, but it is, and obviously the council can allocate funds, but the neighborhood is under that understanding that it would go towards Bicentennial.
Would it be helpful if we made a motion to that effect when and if we finally approved this? I don't know if that's a question for Brian, but.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to think. I mean, so we're selling the property, the property, the money's just going to drop into the general fund, right? So, I mean, you could make a motion of intent because you can't, you're not going to be able to bind future councils on it. The money's going to drop into the general fund and at some point a future council is going to be asked to appropriate the money for something. So you could make a motion saying that the current council wants to express our intent. That's where you believe the money ought to be used for when it's eventually spent. But that's the most binding, binding thing.
So that's kind of what we did with the park um north of Timview High School, right? We, we never, that wasn't, I mean, we made verbal promises. I think we, maybe we even had a motion as a council, but, but we built that park because we said we would.
Yeah, I think it, it moved up in sequence.
Yeah.
Because of the sale of another park in that same area. But I think that was, I think, very similar, same intent statement came with. But I think that was, I think, very similar, same intent statement came with that.
Okay.
I've been hoping it would be Development Services Party Fund.
You've earned it. All right, any other questions for Bill?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. All right, next discussion regarding resolution imposing fire restrictions due to hazardous environmental conditions. This is presented by our fire marshal Lynn Schofield.
I'm back. I'll try not to read very much. Um, so it's that time of year again. Um, I had originally said these fire restrictions to go into effect on July first. Um, however, uh, yesterday afternoon, after watching new fires start through the basin, existing fires started in Beaver County, fired resulting in evacuations in New Mexico, Colorado, and Fall, Florida. Then it became apparent that with our heat wave that's been over this for the last week, um, our high grass do our uh, normal spring that maybe we needed to move preferably yesterday afternoon. But we got here yesterday afternoon, so I upped the fire restriction notice to go into effect, effective upon adoption of the resolution. So let me tell you what this basically does. This is a fire restriction for open fires within the Provo City watershed. That includes all of the mountains facing um, our east bench, includes the canyons in it, up two and including southward. And basically what this prohibits is going up, finding ten rocks, putting them together and starting a fire in there for whatever purpose. So these are level one fire restrictions as well we're implementing. That will require those fires be uh, built in existing campgrounds and the existing pavement areas where they have improved fire rings that have accessible space around them. Uh, so that's what it does. What it does not do is it does not prohibit people from going out into our wonderful parks and enjoy barbecue, roasting marshmallows over a fire, um, using good fire sense, of course. It does not permit, or it does not prohibit homeowners from having fires, leading fires within their backyards. And I don't want to see illegal fires. Enemies are not running yardways, they're not burning trash. They don't have twenty seven pallets at them. There is an actual legal definition of recreational fire. Um, it doesn't prohibit that within the residences of Provo City. Uh, it does not prohibit those who wish to go out camping and hiking in our foothills from using uh, switch powered gas stoves for cooking. Um, so basically, switch powered fires, it's level, it's a level one fire restriction is what we are asking for. Um, I signed the order this morning. We published this at eight o'clock this morning uh, to notice the public that the fire restrictions are going into effect. Uh, in order to stay within the law, the statute as adopted by legislature requires that upon uh, making that right foundation, the fire code efficiently, they'll come through the legislative body. Apparently, sometimes fire mar, fire marshals get big britches. And so they want some oversight over them. So um, I'm approaching you as the legislative body to recommend at this time that we implement level one fire restrictions to the Provo City watershed to protect our water and natural resources effective upon adoption of that resolution, which I will ask you to do. Do you have any questions?
Amen.
Preached.
All right. Hey, you're right. I'll see you later.
Thanks, Lynn. All right, next we have a discussion regarding ordinance admitting Provo City code to make corrections and updates related to cross connect control and backflow prevention. This will be presented by Emily Guerrero.
Hey, I'll turn the, uh, grease on this. Uh, so here to go for an update to the cross connection control code, uh, the code is mandatory for and forces the cross connection program. Um, this is the program that's mandated by the state for all public water systems. Uh, the purpose of our cross connection control program is to keep the drinking water clean and free of any contaminants or pollutants that can backflow into the drinking water. Uh, we're currently working on an overhaul of the entire program. Uh, we're making general improvements, bringing it up to state standards. Um, so we're updating all of our program documents. We want to update the code. Uh, we've moved to an online backflow tracking software. We're just updating everything with the entire program. Um, our main focus for the next few years is going to be on commercial and industrial water users because those are the higher hazards as far as backflow prevention goes. Um, for residential areas, the approach is more centered on public education. Um, that's part of the state uh, requirements for the cross connection control program is to put out public education for residents and business owners. Um, if we, can we pull up the code I sent over? I just want to scroll through just a couple of highlights. Yeah, can I scroll through it on this side or? Okay, no, you're good. If you just want to keep scrolling down. So that's the old code. Um, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of things. So we're clarifying the purpose of the program um, and the code there. I'll scroll down. Um, just defining who's administering the code. And then we add definitions for a bunch of program terms that are kind of specific to cross connection. Uh, you can scroll through all those terms. Uh, it just talks about prohibited actions. This is similar to the old code, just saying that you can't have unprotected cross connections. Down, oh, just a little bit. Um, this one, we did add, it allows for Provo Water Resources to determine the necessary backflow prevention measures um, that any water users would need to take. Um, it also talks about secondary meter protection. So this is your dual checks in the meter cans. Um, talks about how they are, you know, it is the current standard to have them. And then we also uh, will be retrofitting old ones to add those in. Uh, also talks about system containment protection. So if you have HOAs or private utility owners, it kind of talks about just um, if we need to require backflow protection before the entire system and not at an individual um, location. Goes over the right of entry for when we need to do hazard assessments. Um, talks about the responsibility of the water users. Um, and it clarifies uh, requirements for backflow preventer testing, all of our record keeping, um, and then backflow preventer installation requirements. Um, then this just kind of goes over the responsibilities of the water um, purveyor, the user, the building official that reviews plans. Um, let's see, scroll down just a little bit more. Uh, that's just going over installation requirements. And then we also added this new section, um, approval of backflow assemblies in new construction. So before you get a certificate of occupancy, um, the cross connection control coordinator would need to go on site, inventory the backflow assemblies, make sure they've been tested, um, before you get a certificate of occupancy. Uh, it talks about record keeping, which is a requirement from the state. Um, and then it also introduces fines and enforcement measures for non-compliance. Does anyone have any questions? Um, most mostly an internal cleanup.
A lot of states or a lot of cities have had very small cross connection control um, codes that don't have a lot of information of the rural water provided template code that a lot of cities and regions have been using. So we took their template, we took some of our old code, and then we also took uh, we like modified it to fit Provo and some issues that we're having, to kind of just address everything through an overhaul.
Okay, awesome. Thanks. Any questions?
So, so when you you talk about initiating companies of overhaul the programs, what happens next? And what does that overhaul look like? I mean, is this a ten year process, the next two months?
Um, so first you want to get the code, um, the code updated. Um, we are moving to update our program documents, which is an internal um, cross connection control program guide. So it talks about our policies and our enforcement. That's mostly an internal document, because the resident was updating that. Um, and then what are we doing? Oh, and then we moved to an online backflow tracking software. So we've already moved to an online software, but this code really helped as far as um, we're really kind of increasing our enforcement and the um, like how much people know about the program, where it's not a very visible program, we're trying to kind of increase public education on there.
Right, any other questions? Okay, thanks, all. All right, we will have a ten minute break.
Recording stopped.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, thanks for this opportunity to just update you on legislative matters. I've been working with that since I arrived here some close to seven years ago. And our main ally and partner with all this is the Utah League of Cities and Towns. Seems like virtually every group out there, whether it's doctors or anything else, has an advocacy group up at the legislature. And you quickly learn why when you spend some time up there. For Cities and Towns, it's the constant tension of the legislature wanting to solve something with a one-size-fits-all quote-unquote solution, or take away some authority and that type of thing. And so we constantly find ourselves facing a slew of what we would view as encroachments on local municipal authority. And so the league is enormously helpful with that. And Cameron leads that in his phenomenal. I wanted to share with you just some of the perspectives because so there's that category. That's the big category of what I spend my time on up there and what, you know, LPC members Gary Garrett, Councilmember Garrett and Council Chair Trice McKay are up there on our Legislative Policy Committee. That's a weekly, that function is a weekly meeting during the legislative session. We meet off the session as well. And they receive regular updates. You also have a Utah League of Cities and Towns Board, which is a larger group of mayors, council members and such that are on there. And then you have the executive officers. And as you probably are aware, Mayor Kafusi is the president. So she is on the she's not only on the board, she's not only in LPC, but she's also been in the board. And in that capacity, meets weekly during the session with the governor's office, with Cam also there, and then with the board members and other things, getting ready for LPC, making sometimes high-level decisions, making decisions that we don't have time to go to LPC on occasionally, and that kind of thing. Separate from all the league activity, and I'll have Cameron come up here and share with you kind of a legislative update from the perspective of things that might be of interest to you. But I wanted to talk about, there's also a category of things that are not things that we work with the league on. That wasn't maybe the case so much when I first got here, but at one point in discussions with the mayor, we thought, well, you know what? We can look for things that are of importance to us. And of course, we always want to check with the league. But the main focus we've had is, we decided, you know what? Let's go after funding. We haven't really had an operation, to our knowledge, here in the city of going after funding. And now frankly, it's tens of millions later, just that we've been able to go see as a result of that little paradigm switch of let's go play offense up there, let's go see what we can do. And the league has no problem with every city going after their fair show funds up there. But the main thing I wanted to share with you today was a pretty dramatic story this session. As we're getting ready for the session, and Scott was in on these discussions and everything, we're checking with legislators, we're checking with lobbyists. Okay, is there a funding request we should make this year? And the resounding answer we got back from everyone we talked to was, no, I would lay low this year. This is not your year. Bad funding year, there's no money. You guys have already had probably more than your share on that airport. And for you to come beat the drum one more time is probably just not a good look. It's not strategically wise. There's no funding anyway. Abandon ship on all your projects, lay low. And we were comfortable with that. And Scott and I have had a lot of discussions about the importance of being nimble in this world. And, you know, frankly, yeah, we could show you like the seven drafts of our legislative, it sounds so simple, come up Provost Legislative Priority little one-pager. Well, that thing went through so many drafts because the landscape changes based on the feedback you're hearing and things. But Mayor Kafusi, with her relationships and her positions that she's had, has always got an eye on, well, how can I benefit Provo? And lo and behold, just before the session's about to begin, a prominent legislature legislator says, I want to help you get some money this session, this session with no money. And really? Yeah, come visit with me. So she takes a binder up of all the things we could kind of go after. And at the end of the meeting, they kind of concluded, come after some more airport money. Really? Come after airport money? Yep, come after airport money. Okay, fair enough. We'll be nimble. So as a result of that one little meeting and relationship, at the end of this legislative session, we got $5 million for our Provo City Airport in a year when we were gonna, the conventional wisdom from our lobbyists, from everyone, was don't do it. So amazing dramatic story of one relationship, one connection, one meeting, and and it was phenomenal to see. So I do spend some, I've spent a good portion of my time on the league priorities, and we'll hear about those. Good portion of my time on Provo City specific priorities. Another one that came up this year that was kind of in the overlap zone was I was on the Working Committee for the Transportation Utility Fees. Yeah, I think you all know the background of that's a great way to fund road maintenance and such by treating it as a utility. You look at trip generation. This building is going to generate this many trips per month. And so we're going to treat it as a utility. And you're likely aware that that was challenged in court and went all the way up to the Supreme Court of the state of Utah and was it was affirmed that that is a fee. You can do that. That's not a tax. That is a fee that you can put on the utility bill to pay for your roads and everything. Well, some legislators said, don't like that ruling, let's go change that in law. Others were saying, hey, let's codify a process so that we can even bolster with legislative support that this works. And so received the invitation from Cam to join that Working Committee. And that was a great experience to go up there on a regular basis under Representative Karen Peterson and work with the stakeholders, work with those who had filed the lawsuit saying, you can't do this. Work with the taxpayer advocates group who has really a lot of concerns. And it was a great thing to see us all, at the end of the day, come to a great consensus of this is a process, this is a system that would work. And it was frankly largely maybe Cameron would have said some of this too, but largely based on Provost's model, just so you know. So we have really a great transportation utility fee in a lot of ways. That was looked too often. And it's why I was invited is they wanted to hear the Provost's perspective. So we spent a lot of time on that. And as you may know, at the end of the session, that did get scuttled from some opposition and things are going to roll forward from there. And so those were a couple of the bigger things I worked on. There were a couple of other ones. Sometimes things just happen. I was in on a gravel pit meeting for some reason. And yes, Provo has gravel pits and things, but it was a meeting with maybe 30 or so people. And someone from the other side said, well, is is that guy going to be here next time? We want him here next time. And the next thing I know, I'm in on gravel pit things. And, you know, the way rooms work, suddenly I'm kind of the main voice going through legislation and, you know, and it was really kind of fun, even though it was just kind of a happenstance that it happened that way. So it's a fun, fun place to be working. I appreciate the opportunity. And with that, I'll turn some time to, yes, the incredibly talented Cameron Deal, who manages all the chaos up there, herds the cats, and makes it all work. And so I wanted to let you hear from him. And if there are questions for him or me, we're happy to answer.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. And Councilmember, how much time should we plan on for this discussion? Okay, perfect, perfect. First, I want to thank publicly Provost City for sharing Mayor Michelle Kafusi with all 255 cities and towns and 500 mayors and council members across the state. It is no small task to be the president of the league. What Isaac referenced, that she's on the Executive Committee as well as the League Board and the Policy Committee. And what that meant is she signed up for a four-year commitment. So she's currently in year three of that four-year commitment as an officer, but we rely heavily on those officers. And we spend a lot of time together. And you've seen one of her strategic initiatives, which was the Speak Up megaphone that we distributed to league members and tried to lean into this past legislative session in a way that we haven't done in the past. We've often said the strength of the league is the membership, and we urge our members to build relationships. But what we found this past year was some of our more timid or shyer members of the organization, because they saw Mayor Kafusi get up and say, we all need to do this, they were more receptive to that appeal. And it bore some really good fruit for us during this past legislative session. I just finished my 16th session at the League of Cities and Towns, which is nuts to me. I don't feel that old to be the institutional knowledge, but it's been a privilege to represent Provost City at the Capitol during that time. I don't have a PowerPoint. And the reason I don't have a PowerPoint is, you know, fool me once. I showed up to do a legislative update here at Provost City a couple of years ago, Mayor Kafusi and Isaac probably remember this. When the city pulled up my presentation, I'm a well-known University of Utah fan, and they'd replaced my background with BYU logos and juxtaposed a BYU shirt on me throughout the presentation. So I didn't even give you that option this time around. I did wear a blue tie as a peace offering. Yeah, so fool me once. But nevertheless, it is an honor to represent you. And Provo is near and dear to my heart because my grandmother grew up here, just down the street, went to the Mazer School. And and I appreciate that Provo, like many of the, many of our other large established cities, you're right at this tug of war between preserving that character that makes you special, while also planning for the future, being a regional hub, but also everybody's hometown, being a college town, but with an access to the foothills. So you have all sorts of really big important challenges while also being a hometown to so many people. So thank you for the service that you render for your community. I'm going to take five minutes of my remaining time to give a quick overview of where we're at as of June 18th, legislature's meeting right now. So I appreciate the opportunity not be at the Capitol. We'll be back up there all day tomorrow. It really is a year-round session nowadays. When I started, there usually was a several-month gap. In fact, when I started, Provo had a league president at the time, Mayor Louis Billings. And then Mayor John Curtis was also a league president. We've had league participation from multiple council members and staff throughout my time. And Isaac, thank you for all the time that you spend, a councilmember. McKay, thanks for all the time you spend with LPC. Isaac and I talk all the time on behalf of Provo to make sure that we have two-way communication of what matters to your city and that that's reflected within the league in addition to Mayor Kafusi's leadership within the officers. But I'm going to take just five minutes to say, here's what's in front of us, and then preserve the rest of the time for just back and forth conversation. Isaac mentioned the transportation utility fee, and he hit all the highlights. I anticipate at some point they're being litigation again around the transportation utility fee. I also expect legislation again to revoke the ability of cities to do the transportation utility fee. Our effort last year that Isaac and I were a part of was an effort to get in front of that and say, let's pass a bill that codifies a process. And he's right. We relied heavily on the lessons learned from Provo. I feel like I know your ordinance backward and forward now and the subsequent challenges that you faced over the last 11 years since you implemented them. So stay tuned. That issue is still going to be front and center as we go forward and just overall the authority for cities. Councilmember.
Is the league going to take a stance to fight for that again?
Yes, last year, the board adopted some key principles for the organization. Mayor Kafusi helped draft those. So the board outlined these key principles that will inform our advocacy on anything in that fee space. Where it goes from here is still a little bit up in the air because House Bill 367 looked not just at transportation utility fees, but also looked at broadband fees and police fees. There are some interesting happenings at the Capitol right now, looking at all three of those. In fact, I have a meeting tomorrow. So timing-wise, I'll be able to report back to you after tomorrow's meeting to get a sense of if the legislature is going to step in one way or the other. Representative Peterson was a complete rock star. She was able to bring everybody together, as Isaac indicated, in a way that made us all comfortably uncomfortable. That was the term of art that I used in committee, where we felt like we got to a compromise that preserved the rule, preserved the legal authority, and preserved your autonomy as Provost City to define the methodology that made sense for you. But also, on behalf of the advocates on the other side, there were some key concessions in there that we were willing to do in order to get to that grand compromise. Unfortunately, the bill didn't pass, but it is operating right now as a safe harbor. So our recognition of the cities over the last few months has been, if you're going to go down this path of transportation utilities, use the process in 367 as an unofficial safe harbor, which mirrors a lot of Provost's experience.
What's her district representative, Peterson?
Yeah, Representative Peterson doesn't represent Peterson County. She represents St. Louis County.
She's a former city council member. So we met with her shortly after the litigation ended where the Supreme Court ruled that the cities do indeed have the authority to do a transportation.
And because of her experience as a city council member, and she's rare, there aren't many of them at the Capitol anymore. She wanted to bring the stakeholders together and find a path forward. And again, she earned the respect of all the different stakeholders. When I started the league back in 2006, about 40% of the state House of Representatives had local government experience. Now the number's about 10%. And she's one of the few. That's right.
So can you say a little bit more about the scuttlebutting of the bill? I mean, what's the drama behind that? And what are the prospects of it being successful in overturning it?
That is a three-hour question that I'll narrow down to one minute here. During the final few days of the legislative session, there was opposition that arose primarily from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints about what would happen if House Bill 367 passed and more cities were to impose a transportation utility fee. Right now, only 13 cities have imposed it, the first being Provo. So there was a concern that if House Bill 367 passes, that it could lead to proliferation of these fees. One of our main points to the legislature was that, under that Supreme Court case, the court validated that we have that authority already. When Provo acted in 2013, we assumed we had that authority, but it's nice to have the Supreme Court validation. Ultimately, the bill sold out in the Senate because of some of their concerns around the bill. And there have been some conversations this interim about what specifically those concerns are and can they be addressed? And at this point, it's premature for me to answer those questions publicly because there's been just a lot of back and forth. But I know Representative Peterson. It's two weeks ago now, and I'll be following it. There are again tomorrow's, we're trying to gather additional information from the books. The last year, there were a couple of bill files that were open that would have repealed that authority, which just preempted our authority in state law. And we fought those off in part because we were willing to come to the table on 367. And there were a couple of key concessions. So for example, one concession that we agreed to last year as an organization was that the transportation utility fee wants the city to impose it with sunset after 10 years, and the city would have to re-impose it. And that was a big deal to the Taxpayers Association and other groups. And we ultimately got comfortable enough with that because of some of the other things that we were successful on within that bill. If a bill were to come forward, Representative Peterson has told me she's not sure she wants to run 367. And yet she wants to give better sense leadership than others. If we go forward, we feel like 367 is a good starting point because we all agree on it. There is some concern within league members, actually, it was on a call, we just let's speak on this with a bunch of cities, about jettisoning 367 and starting over. Because we got to a compromise on a grand bargain there. And we want to hold firm to that bargain rather than starting over. It's election year, you're going to have new legislators come January. So there's an aspect of starting over the decision process, but it's hard to say right now exactly what it's going to look like, but it's one of the visions.
Is the, I mean, it seems to me that if, maybe I don't, I don't understand the metrics that we use to measure car trips or vehicle impact on the streets. But it seems to me that a church, as opposed to a business or a school, I mean, I know the LDS church obviously owns schools. I'm an employee of one of them, so I'm not, I'm not that dumb. But, and I understand those may be in a category unto themselves, but it seems to me like a church has a pretty, would have a pretty low rate. Right? Because it's only, you know, the traffic that that building generates is pretty minimal compared to lots of other types. But they, do they measure those differences? Do we measure those?
That would be part of the methodology. As I mentioned before, one of the pieces that we wanted in terms of local flexibility in 367 was the ability of cities to determine the right usage methodology. Methodology still had to be tied to use, but there are several different ways that you could calculate and use. So you're identifying one of those potential methods where your traffic count for that particular use is going to be less than a business that's owned by 367. And so you would want to take that into account as part of your methodology. Ultimately, where we, where we left it was in 367. In order for a city to do a transportation utility fee, they had to do a study, which Provo did in 2013 and has updated since. Where you had to talk about the actual use and then tie the fee back to that usage. That's the key legal distinction between the tax and the fee. And ultimately, if the city went through that process with methodology, then under 367, under current statutory and case law, then the city can go forward with the transportation utility fee or transportation user fee. Where according to some concerns is if the city doesn't have a robust methodology, then it doesn't, it starts with the old, like it's tax and fee, and the state has certain parameters around how cities can impose taxes. So the imposition of a tax and the imposition of fee have two different legal parameters.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Joe, I'm wondering, Cam, you might have the knowledge to answer those questions. I've been thinking about this. So Provost's 52% nonprofit. I assume that that's wildly high compared to most cities. What are most cities generally?
Yep, it runs the gamut. So you would have, you'd have Concauz with Salt Lake City, South Salt Lake City. Those are the cities that come to mind immediately that are in that same ballpark. South Salt Lake is a majority city that is not taxable, where the majority of the property ownership in the city does not pay property taxes. Salt Lake City, I don't remember the exact number, but it's in that, it's in that same general space. So it runs the gamut. Some cities are down 10%. So the majority is private property. And it depends on whether you're a regional hub. So you have a lot of county or school district or state-owned property within your cities. Part of it depends on whether you're a regional hub. So you have a lot of county or school district or state-owned property within your cities. And so then, when we have conversations about, say, taxes versus fees, or even the conversation you were just having as a council about the use of public land, that looks a little different in each community. So one of our, one of our key principles as an organization is one size fits all. Because when the legislature does a well-intentioned, well-meaning bill to try to solve a certain problem, we may all agree on the problem, but that one particular type of implementation may have a completely different impact on Provo than it does on San Antonio, even though you're just down three ways from each other because of property ownership or because of size of your public safety forest or any number of reasons. With that, because you were talking about housing, I'm gonna give you just a two-minute update on what's gotten me there. Then, you know, I welcome, I welcome your feedback there. Last year, we were down 240,000 that impacted cities in some form or fashion. So I'm receiving a percent. 240,000 that impacted cities in some form or fashion. When I started the league, that number was closer to 100. So the workload has increased dramatically. It's not just us. The legislatures passed more legislation in the last two years than any two-year period of time in the state history.
And was it 591 bills?
Yeah, yeah, 591.
Last year.
Yeah, yeah.
Better implement, they're going into a better.
Yep. So last year, around this time, we actually circulated this document to legislators, who are in the process of opening it. But it's all, these are a bunch of bills related to population growth that pass, but are also in the process of being implemented. What we're trying to say to the legislatures, you don't have to pass a new bill every year because we're, we're still implementing a lot of the calls that we've worked on together over the last few years. That being said, this is a table that should be Friday facts this Friday. So only you all have seen Friday facts, but this will be Friday facts this Friday, and it breaks down the different housing-related bills that passed this special session. And I should know that every bill on this was a bill that we either supported or we were neutral on. And they range from the FIDS, the Personal Investment Zone, to infrastructure financing districts and a few other things. But it was a result of a lot of blood, sweat, and tears by the city leaders everywhere. Or if you see, you'll remember that last December, we met with the governor and she christened herself the the mayor. Yeah, right? That's right. She was laying out the amount of, the amount of investment. Sorry, legislators text about special session. It's coming up tomorrow. But the mayor was further than that, went through in great detail with Governor Cox, the amount of investment that Provo has done on the west side of the city in the sewer infrastructure and sewer monitoring structure to facilitate new development. Pointing out that if the legislature had gone forward with a couple of proposals around the time of December, what that would mean financially to Provo taxpayers, who had just invested in hundreds of millions of dollars worth of infrastructure. So we were successful in changing the narrative in that meeting and over the course of the subsequent weeks to say, generally speaking, cities are not saying no to housing. Instead, cities have been zoned for and entitled to 190,000 housing units across the state that are not being built. And why are they not getting built? Well, in many cases, they're not getting built because of infrastructure challenges, or they're not getting built because of factors, market forces that are outside of our control, like interest rates or supply chain issues. So the bills that passed this session, again, we supported or were neutral on all of them. Ultimately, we're trying to solve some of that infrastructure. So how do you pay for those infrastructure dollars? But not just for housing for the sake of housing. How do you get housing that facilitates affordable home ownership? So not just housing for the sake of housing, not just affordability for the sake of affordability, but opportunities for first-time homebuyers and for people to own their own homes. I bring it up because the league board last spring, after what I would call a pretty frustrating meeting, feeling like we're doing all these things, the legislature's still not listening to us. The league board said, we're gonna establish these key principles. So any bill that comes forward in the housing space, we're gonna evaluate based on these key principles. Principle number one, will it result in more affordability? Principle number two, will it result in more ownership? Principle number three, will it result in more sustainable infrastructure so that cities can actually pay for this infrastructure over time? And then number four, principle four, will it result in more quality of life for today's and tomorrow's residents? And ultimately, I think that framing and the data that we built of the 190,000 units helped complete and change the narrative during the front of the session. Well, now we're, we are full speed ahead for the 2025 session. The mission on housing affordability has already met multiple times. And my, if, if nothing else, my invitation to Provo City, Isaac and Mayor have been very involved in this and council members all through, through LPC, where we have a internal advisory group where we are checking in regularly on housing and land-related issues. So if there's anybody who's in the city that, in addition to the names that we mentioned, that want to be part of that advisory group, please let us know. We met last week and we'll be meeting throughout the summer. Because under the Commission on Housing Affordability, which is a statewide commission, they've created four subgroups. And the league has representation on all of these subgroups. Here in Utah County, we have one of your neighboring city council members, who represents the league there. I kept sort of talking to Donald for a while. Then we have mayors and council members from across the state that are involved in these commission subgroups. But one commission subgroup is talking about the use of publicly owned land. So I found the discussion of the budget proposal fascinating because that's front and center in the discussion within the show, subgroup one. Also looking at helping, this is Steve Walters' term, of helping for legacy cities, older cities, who have seen a lot of their housing stock turn to rental housing. How do we get some of that back into the owner-occupied pipeline? And then how do you help first-time homebuyers move into established neighborhoods and not just struggling neighbors? Looking corporate ownership, short-term rentals, tax increment, and challenges around condominium build. The second subgroup is going to be looking at Rogers and parking requirements. So again, like I had the conversation, I was fascinated because that's part of the tug-of-war that's coming in, something for shopping and building right now is should the city, should cities regulate certain things, or should the state step in and say, we're gonna set a baseline standard? Like they did a few years ago on roadways, same residential areas, this is the road with. These are the, this is the tug-of-war that we're, we're having right now. And we've been using Slido and all of our policy committee meetings, board meetings, and advisory group meetings, trying to get as much feedback from as broad of a cross-section of city leaders as possible to then help inform our advocacy as we proceed over these next few months.
And we wanted to talk to you, which I've been saying.
Yeah, it was really helpful. It's been, it's been super helpful. And, and when you filled out those Slido results, those few of the league conferences and policy meetings, we read every last comment. In fact, before I left, before I left Salt Lake to come here this morning, I was reviewing some of the Slido results from last week's meetings, including the board meeting, and trying to get them ready to help inform the subgroup meetings that we have in the next few years. So we do read all of it, we analyze all of it, and we're trying to figure out where do we have consensus within the league? And then where do we have a large variety of opinion where maybe we've got some mixed messaging within the organization? And then trying to figure out, do we have a consensus on the problem we're trying to solve? So maybe this proposal doesn't, doesn't stretch the itch, but we agree on the problem that needs to be solved. So is there a way to solve it? Another way to solve that problem still respects your role as elected officials, representing your community. What makes a monster difference, whether that's housing affordability, public works, public safety, or any of the other topics that we work on. There was anything that you'd like to add as, as league president to give your, you've got the bigger way of understanding our stuff.
It was fascinating. It was really fun. It's fun to be the league president and be over every city because you get Camus, the Camus mayor calling me, asking for help. You get Salt Lake City's mayor calling and asking me, what are, what are you gonna do in Provo with this? It's just really fascinating. And the amount of 591 bills passed this year is exhausting. I'm just here to tell you, they are not even taking time up there to let the ones they recently passed to go into effect, and it's very frustrating. So I push back all the time on, don't tell us how to run our cities. Local control is where it's at. We know how to do it. We live here. And the, the one size fits all. I even push back on Cam and say, Cam, give me a break. You give me another city that is the county seat, has the largest private university, two LDS temples, an MTC, a regional hospital, and now you tell me how I'm supposed to run my city on this new bill that's gonna put taxes on my citizens. It's just like, like I'm shaking right now because I'm so passionate about local control. Because you all know, you're making decisions that decide where Provo's gonna be in 30 years because you live here and you live here. All of you live here. You're down in the trenches. So I'm really passionate about keeping the control with you all and not having us, a house rep or a senator from Davis County or St. George tell Provo how to do it. So anyways, that's the beauty of the state. And tasking Isaac when we first were the most lucky people in the world when this gig, I hope you feel the same way. But giving him the task to be over the legislature has just been one of my best decisions I've ever made. He's engaged, he's smart, he's articulate, and he's made a huge difference up there at the state with us. So it's, it's, I'm already like riled up for this coming year. Because I just, if we do another, I mean, we thought the year before that was bad, and it was what, 500? We broke 500. Yeah. And we just told all of our reps, knock it off. You're not even letting us catch our breath. And then to come out this year with 591 new bills to implement, most of them non-funded mandates, right? As per usual, like it just makes my blood boil. So here we go again. We'll be ready to go and I'll just be on fire like I am when I'm up there.
I'm just so glad they believe in limited government.
Well, the last thing I'll note, if you haven't received one of these, I brought extra copies, the best amount of the spring conference. This is the annual report from the league, so you can see the return investment that Provo gets from the participation within the league. And then the last page, you can, you can sense the blood boiling from Eric Fuzy, with his retirement residential letter that's part of it. But all that being said, I feel really good about what we accomplished the last couple of sessions, the battles that we've won. And more importantly, the balance that we've been able to strike, ensuring that you have the authority and the tools that you need to run for the next 30 years. And I, to me, what makes this job so exciting and satisfying for me personally is being able to be your voice at the Capitol so that you can be the voice of your, your residents here. And so it's 100 represents you, and I recognize that I have my time, but I'll take any other questions or I'll sit around for a little bit as well.
Gary Garrett.
Cam or Isaac, related to that $5 million airport grant, and congratulations on that, Mayor. Is that earmarked for a certain purpose runway expansion, gate extension?
This was for the expansion of the terminal, so yeah, we, we're already starting to use some of the money for
concrete.
Concrete.
Awesome.
Okay, any other questions for Cam? All right. Thank you so much. Oh, Councilor Christensen.
Yeah, this, this may, I may need to take this offline. Are other cities, you kind of touched on it, as concerned about homeownership? And the, and the process of investment funds, PE, you know, private equity funds. Like in some cities, there's much 20, 30%, I think in Atlanta, we've got three or four equity funds that own that much of the same family housing. And it's becoming such an irresistible investment. And we're seeing, we're seeing that impact here. I mean, is that shared with other cities?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, I noticed with Steve Walters this morning, I've referenced Steve a couple of times, but Steve is the governor's housing director, pointed him back in December, and seen our very conversation corporate ownership just this morning. We had a fight, Steve, about this last week. When we've asked our membership through some of our surveys, they've seen an uptick and an increase in corporate owned housing within their cities, almost every county was up. So yes, it doesn't matter if it's Provo City or other cities, there's, there's a concern about that growth. What I can't give you is an exact data point yet. There are several data points we've seen, and part of what we're doing in the shot of the summer is to try to get aggregated, accurate data about the increase of corporate ownership. And that's both for long-term rentals and for short-term rentals. And then how that's impacting housing availability in communities. To the larger question, just that homeownership piece, it's been fascinating over the last year as we have been promoting these principles to watch mayors and council members from, for us to save from big cities to small towns all embrace that approach. And so I think what we found, and the governor's found this as well, is like this is one area where we can all pay on. And so that's a problem that we all agree is a problem worth solving. Then that opens the door to figure out which solution makes the most sense. And, you know, to the credit of the homeowners, they bring forward the solutions that they think make the most sense. And sometimes we agree and sometimes we disagree. And we've tried to bring forward different, different approaches. In fact, the bills that passed this session really started a lot of the conversations that we were having with legislators to say, Provo City and other cities, they're willing to make the tough decisions to have higher density and to change these types of zoning regulations. But they want to see more owner-occupied units come from it. So how do we accomplish that outcome? And to the credit of particular speaker, Mike Schultz, he said, yes, let's figure out a tool that allows the city, through a development agreement, to say, okay, developer, we'll meet you halfway, we'll meet you in this type of regulation. But in exchange, we want to make sure that a certain number of these units are gonna be restricted, be affordable and owner-occupied. That was probably the first time we've ever had that type of conversation, Cam.
All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. The next item of council business will be our neighborhood district program updates. This will be presented by Rachel Green, our neighborhood district program coordinator. We're so delighted to have you here talking to us about this.
Okay, councillors, mayor, and all other fabulous people. I just wanted to say, back in January, I presented in a board meeting to the council, also a council meeting about some updates to the programs. And there was a few items that we didn't get to, we didn't make decisions on, and that we wanted you to come back later and talk about. And so the first one is the, we wanted to talk about development notifications. So this actually came from me when we were first starting our neighborhood district meetings last year. They weren't really well-attended, especially since it's a whole district. And I, and I was thinking, well, mostly because the developers are, are no longer sending out the notices to the residents that a meeting's coming up. But then since January, our numbers have increased 74% without developers doing any type of noticing. And so I'm not sure if it's because we're now holding quarterly meetings, so it's more of an event, or if it's
Free food?
Yeah, free food.
Rachel Green.
It could be the dinners, it could be word of mouth coming from the board members, the executive board members talking to their neighbors. Also, I've been doing more targeted campaigns where before I was just kind of doing a general message, now I'm going through the people where I know are interested in those, in these issues. I'm emailing them directly, contacting them, calling them, letting them know what's going on, and they're kind of spreading the word. But all of our numbers have gone up, except for District Four, which belongs to one of their neighborhoods, if you remember. So those numbers went down. But overall, they've almost, you know, almost doubled our, our numbers that we've had. And we've had a few meetings where we've had counting Zoom and in-person, 100 people show up to our, our meetings when it's an important issue. And so I'm realizing that probably my goal shouldn't be getting people to leave their district meetings because they are now coming. My new goal is getting them to attend the planning commission and city council hearings. One of the problems we've always had is that residents go to the neighborhood meeting, they have their say, they talk to the developer, and they think their job is done. And, but all that, that meeting is condensed to one sentence in the planning commission staff report. And so it's not very much. And so now I'm really encouraging them to go to planning commission and city council. We'll see how tonight's meeting goes. I've really been pushing on a few items on that. But, and I also think that, oh, and they do receive mail notification for those meetings, those who live nearby. They will receive a close card with the planning commission and the city council information on it. So they are already getting notified. Another thing is, I've noticed that if the if the executive board members are more invested, if it's an item that's really important to them, they'll get residents out. And I think it really needs to come from the executive board members because it might be, I might think a development project is really important and they're like, no, we we decided that ten years ago because I don't have the experience, they do. And so they're the ones, I'm going to push them to really be the ones to get the residents to come. Also, talking to development services. They brought up the fact that it's no longer in our code that developers must attend neighborhood district meetings. So how am I going to force them to do notification for a meeting they don't even have to attend? And it's a very fine line I'm walking in that so far, every developer that I've asked to come to a neighborhood district meeting has come. And they know that they don't have to come, but they they've, you know, say, yes, no, I want to talk to the neighborhoods. I want to make sure that we keep that, those good feelings. The last thing I want is to do a hardship on a developer and then they maybe complain to the state or something. We always hear rumors that the state is going to say, okay, no, we're developers coming to neighborhood meetings. Like I'm trying to make it as welcoming as possible, but also getting worked out. So I think that's kind of a an on issue. So I'm recommending that we don't change the code that developers have to get notices. Um it just didn't really make sense and we are getting the numbers that we need. And then the next part was about fee waivers. Um, this is something that I've always been a little bit confused on with the fee waivers, why that's in the code. I talked to development services, to Bill Pepperoni and Erin Hartmore. I said, besides the most recent um Foothill A D U and the one when councillor Bogdan was neighborhood chair and she did one. In your fifteen years being in Provo City, has anyone else done a fee waiver? And they could not remember any. And they also stated that they essentially have a fee waiver because they can come to development services, they can come to the city council. And if it's something that you want, then it can come from the city council, it can come from development services. It essentially is a fee waiver. So um my recommendation is to not have the fee waivers. It's this is one more step that I don't think is needed, development services doesn't think is needed. So I'm recommending to take that out of the code.
So I have a quick question. So if a neighborhood wanted to do a change, um and the council or development services didn't want to take it and and run with that for them, they could still apply for an amendment, but they would just need to pay the fee.
Right. And that was something that uh Director Pepperoni and Erin Hartmore brought up. If it's something the city doesn't want to do, if the city thinks it's a bad idea, why are we paying for their idea that they don't want to happen? They should apply just like everyone else applies and pay the fees. That was another point that they brought up.
Right. But if it is something that the development services or councils like, oh, obviously, this is the most brilliant idea from our people, we clearly want to do it. Then we would take ownership of it, we would be the sponsor. We still wouldn't need the fee waiver.
Right, because yeah, because the development services doesn't charge themselves.
Okay, first councillor Bogdan and then councillor Handley.
So I'm going to push back on this. Because mine happened to be what the council wanted to do. And I got thrown the boot by both development services and the city council. And I had to do it all myself from beginning to end with no council help and poor little Javin kind of guiding me through it. And I want to push back and say fifteen plus years, yes, those last two have happened within the last few years. So my personal opinion is leave it where it is. And let it just ride. It's not hurting anybody being in there. Leave it in there, leave it in the code, leave it, leave that as an option. Because you know, that was pretty important to my neighborhood and things and it was council initiated. But it was Becky Bogdan thrown at going through all the steps by myself.
Councillor Handley.
Yeah, I I would agree with Becky on this. I I think um because in Foothills case, there was divided opinion among the council about it, right? And and so it I it's not always obvious that they know for sure. I mean, there might be a sponsor, maybe there are two. Uh I guess that's all it requires technically, or two council members who say, we'll take this forward. The problem with that is that um, some of these applications or these requests are most powerful because they're coming directly from the citizens and um and I can imagine lots of scenarios in which the council says, yeah, we'll take over this so you don't have to do it and but there's no one on the council who really understands the issue as well as the neighborhood does or feels as passionately about it as they do. And I I think in the case of the Foothill neighborhood, um that just ended up being, that delayed their their request process by a pretty significant time chunk that I just, I just kind of felt like it was, they got kind of caught in limbo. So I'm a little worried about about this um actually making it a little bit harder for people to want to go forward with the project because then they also have to figure out how they're going to gather fees from you know, that then it's like, well, if you're going to sign, do you agree that this should happen? Yes. Well, are you willing to pay fifteen dollars to make it happen so that we can cover this fee? And the neighborhood uh point person is going around begging for money. It's just, I just, I just don't think it's
Right, I I do have a So if they didn't go through the fee waiver process, they could have gotten that down so much quicker. They were waiting for the free uh waiver. Um and that's why it took so long. They were waiting for a signature from a neighborhood chair.
Right, which was the, that was the original.
Just did it, they could have done it a lot sooner.
Well, but that's because we told them that that's, it all, that was a problem, as you remember, I wanted to fix anyway. I didn't, I thought, well, you know, somebody's requesting a fee waiver, it shouldn't, it shouldn't go to the neighborhood person, it should go to the council or to the staff. I think they can make that dis- the determination much more knowledgeably than a neighbor who who may or may not have a political grudge against what's happening, right? So then that just created potentially creates a lot of tension that's also unnecessary.
If I remember correctly, the neighborhood chair didn't want to sign it because the neighbors were going to get profit from the, from the ordinance that they wanted. And they didn't feel like the city should pay for other people to profit. And so that's another thing where it's, okay, how do we weigh that?
Well, that's why I'm saying I don't, I don't think that that neighborhood should, I don't think a neighborhood um board member should make that decision. I think we should still have the fee waiver, but I think the fee waiver should be a decision made either by staff or council so that we don't create that tension where you're creating political tensions between neighbors.
Right, right now, just a question for you. Right now, the code is written where you have to get a neighborhood chair to sign off on it. And then have the head of development services also sign off. So are you saying to take both of those off and just have it go directly to the council or nobody?
Well, I don't mind having um Bill's office do it. Um I don't know what the mechanism though is for, don't you need? Uh if it's not a neighborhood chair, it it's like a certain number of signatures or?
Right now, it it's written only the neighborhood chair, not even a vice chair or an overriding vote of the board is written, only the neighborhood chair, I mean, the neighborhood district chair and and Bill Pepperoni.
Well, and with yours, it was before we switched over to the new district program.
Yes, yes, that's true, but mine was still just, it was a council decision and then they came to me and said, this is in the code.
Good luck. Have fun with this.
Yeah, and it was fine, I learned a lot. But but still, this is what happened and this is a real thing and this happened to me in the last five years.
Yeah, but look at you now. All right, a lot more. Councillor Hobbit.
I I was just, can you remind me what the fees were for these two?
I think it's about a thousand dollars.
It's like a thousand eighty.
A thousand eighty.
Uh you know, when you think about that, like, you know, per household, that that that's just a massive headache unless somebody says, oh, I'm willing to pay it for everyone. You know, I do think there's some downside to having just one person unilaterally being like maybe it should be by vote of the neighborhood board as opposed to because you could have what just one obstructionist who's
Right.
against it.
Yes, Justin Harrison.
So just to provide a little context for the council, there's no fee waivers anywhere in the code other than this section. This is a section just for the neighborhood district program. So if there is an appetite to create a fee waiver, I think it's a different discussion outside of this chapter of code. Uh, other than something coming forward and being sponsored by the council or sponsored by a department, which the city is charged itself for these types of fees. I think that's, I don't know if that's the kind of discussion that the council has an appetite to have, but uh I think the the idea is just cleaning up this portion of code so that it's not fallen on the head of one citizen. Uh, that makes sense.
Okay, that actually does make sense. So in order to address the problems that we're talking about, we would still need to go
Correct. This could be taken out, but if you wanted to
A larger discussion about
Yes, if you wanted to create a fee waiver, it would need to be put in a different section of code. As a side note, I think that's also a discussion that the council's been having in a a larger way of ensuring that those people who come to the city to do business are paying their requisite fees as to not subsidize them, right? So.
Would it make sense if we got rid of the fee waiver to allow the districts to use some of their grant money in order to pay for this application fee? Like, would would that be an appropriate use of those funds and then solve the fee waiver issue?
I think in the end, so that's funds that are allocated from the city that they would just be turning around and paying to the city for the fee.
Right, I I'm just wondering because, yeah.
Well, we could also just do a way of fee waiver and the neighborhood board could provide their recommendation to the council and if, you know, you have a a neighborhood that is saying, we will, we're asking for this fee waiver, I would assume the council would take that into consideration and say, or not fee waiver, sorry, we're asking, we're asking for the council to sponsor this. We would take that into consideration and except in extreme circumstances where they totally don't agree.
That's what happened.
But that's my case sometimes, right? And and then it's back on the neighborhood to say, okay, well then we're going to pay this fee, right? So I don't know, I mean, I I don't like the idea of just having one random fee waiver in our code. And I especially don't like it resting in one person's hands. That's a little strange.
Yeah, let's not get rid of Becky what we did, or let's not do to Beck, anyone else what we did to you. I want to get rid of the fee waiver.
What, where were you? I I had asked, I asked the executive Justin's former person and Bill and it just all came crashing down on me. I asked them all, why, why me? And there was just pointing at fingers and you need to do that. And I said, okay, this is what's best for my neighborhood. This is what I'll do.
It worked out well. It was an anomaly, I don't think. Yeah, yeah, and not everyone's going to rise to the occasion as their neighborhood chair like you did. So I think changing it so that we aren't putting that crazy pressure on somebody would probably be a good idea. I'm glad that you did it, though.
But but we're putting the pressure on them either way because if there's a fee waiver that they can apply for, then we're putting pressure on them to get the application in. If we're saying there's no fee waiver, then then the pressure is on one or a handful of people to go gather a thousand eighty dollars from who knows how many people.
Well, I I think what we're saying is the neighborhoods can ask council or development services to sponsor the amendment. In that case, they don't need a fee waiver and you don't have one person in the neighborhood doing all the work, council or development services are guiding it through the process. If they ask for that amendment and neither the council nor development services are interested in taking it on, then I think it's entirely appropriate for them to say, okay, we're a normal applicant, we're gonna organize and put our money where our mouth is and and do it. Because then they would, their interest may be adverse to that of the city and development services, so they're going to work to prove their case and that would be part of it.
Yeah, but that doesn't address the middle ground that I was describing. I mean, there may be scenario, there are lots of scenarios where citizens want something. Staff and council are like, look, we got so much going on in our plate, we don't have the time to deal with this. I, if you guys want to do that, great, but I'm not going to sponsor because I don't have the time. Or if I am, like I said, I'm not going to really understand it as well as you. That's actually a major reason why I would say no, is it not because I don't want it to happen or I'm politically opposed to it, it's like I've I'm trying to lift twenty other things right now and I don't really have the bandwidth for that. So I'm just, I'm just worried about that getting caught in the in the middle somehow. I mean, we're going to vote on it and I may be in a minority, but I just
And I think it's best to think of it not in these specific examples. Just as a general principle, is it, is it best to have a fee waiver for anything or should sponsorship of legislation come through departments or or council members? Uh I know it's hard to to separate those two, but I can think of a similar scenario of someone coming with something that I think both a department and council members want, but then staff not able to get details on what they want in order to put that into effect and it creates that same, I think, George, your your example, but the opposite. Uh, staff trying to help an applicant that wouldn't be charged a fee. But how important is it to them if if they're not giving, giving the details, if that makes sense? Um, I don't know.
Yeah, and the other scenario that you brought up where neither council nor development services really have the capacity to make that a priority. I think that's a good case for the fee to be paid, right? Because that fee helps to pay for the staffing time and the work to do the thing. So because this application would be competing for time with all of the other paid applications that are in the queue as well, right? So that way it would be on equal footing. It couldn't just be pushed off because it's the the pro bono work cities doing. Like they would have those same rights as an applicant as the other ones who are are paying. And we wouldn't be, I don't know, it's, it's just you're right, we're we're all competing for time and resources and that way they're competing fairly for those.
Yeah, I mean, I I guess I could imagine, I I, you know, if I knew in the, if I go back to Foothill issue, if I knew that they didn't have the option of the waiver and that they needed me to sponsor it in order to make it happen so that I didn't have to ask them to go hand hand in hand to get that money, then I, then I probably would have done it. Because that was the, that would be the right thing to do, to say to the neighborhood, I represent you, you want this to happen. I'm just really concerned about you know, lots of other entities have the money to pay this fee, but citizens who are in their neighborhoods trying to make something good happen, uh it, it's always, I I understand the problem. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to dismiss the problem of like football work on behalf of citizens, but it it's just a different beast when you say uh to a developer, if you want this amendment, you got to pay this fee. It's like, oh yeah, I got a check right here, I'll write it out. But if it's a neighborhood that wants something done and their particular representative is budgeting and, you know, they're getting a lot of obstruction, I guess their only option is they've got to go hand in hand to get that money.
Yeah, but that creates a certain level of organization and buy-in that makes their case stronger.
And while they're out there collecting the money, they can pass out flyers for the guy they want to replace, the council member who didn't step up. Right? Like as council members, we should step up and represent if it's, you know, if it makes sense to us, right?
Yeah. Rachel, did you have more slides to go through?
Yes, so but not on fee waivers. Do you want to discuss fee waivers?
Are there more questions about fee waivers or do we want to hear the rest? Okay, go ahead. We we can come back to this if we need to to move things a bit, yes.
Definitely, definitely. And and keep in mind that the the work still needs to be done, whether there's a fee waiver or not. But you're still noticing the meetings, there's still staff time.
I guess one last question is, would you have proposed language ready for a change in our in that part of the code right now or would you need Or would you need guidance from the council to go ahead and start working on that, that draft?
No, I would need guidance from the council because I wasn't sure how you wanted to go on.
Okay. All right, everybody keep that in back of your mind while we listen to the rest of the presentation.
Um, I did, I, one of the things I don't have in my packet is one of the items that I was tasked with back in January was to hold a city council Q and A events in, in the park. And so we've done two of them so far. We had about sixty people show up for each one. We had some really good discussions. So I appreciate all of your hard work and going to those events. I'm gonna kind of skip this one and go to the survey report. Another task was that um, we do a survey of the neighborhood district program to citizens.
So yeah, so we've done a survey with the board members. We've done a survey with city staff. So now we did a survey with just Provo residents and I wasn't expecting to come to the council dock. It was originally arranged for me to come in October. So we had about two months that we did the survey. Um, we had two hundred and sixty-five responses. It was advertised on social media, the website, um, the utility bill mailer, uh, the newsletter emails that we send out. And it was interesting, the feedback that we got was the majority of people said that Wednesday was their best day, just barely beat out Tuesday and Thursday, but Wednesday got the most votes. They also said that um, they liked the quarterly meetings rather than monthly or every other month. They appreciated the quarterly meetings. Um, they did, what was interesting was that with the residents, they would always prefer to have the meeting in their neighborhood, someplace close to them. But they also want to hear from city staff on a variety of issues. So I think we're gonna stay with our quarterly district meetings that are more focused on city staff presentations, development presentations, and then they can do, the board members can do optional neighborhood meetings in their neighborhood. They have a fund for that if they need to rent a school or something, they want to do flyers. Uh, District Three has done it. They had about twenty people at one meeting and fifty at another meeting that they had. And um, I attended both meetings. It was super good. The district chairs, the district board members pretty much redid a presentation that Parks had given at the district meeting and then wrote down all their questions and then sent them over to Parks afterwards. But it was, it was good to see that big turnout on the west side. And we haven't, none of the other board members have opted to do a neighborhood meeting in their own neighborhood, just District Three has done it and it's been successful on that. And one of the items in the survey was they did have a preference for electing their board members. When we did the survey for the existing board members last year, they kind of divided it up into thirds. A third of them wanted to go back to elections, a third loved the appointment process. And then another third wanted kind of a combo, were your special representatives, BYU, um, the downtown Provo, that those are appointed and then the other ones are elected. And so that brings us to our last slide, which was elections versus appointments. And so, um, so about half of the residents want them elected. They had some other choices, so the majority of mine have elected. The board members, like I said, are split. Um, and so my question to you is, this is your program. Um, how do you want your board members selected? You want to keep with the appointments? Do you want them to be elected? Do you want to do a combo? Kind of opening it up if you have ideas on how you would like it to be.
Has anyone presented a viable way in which executive board members could be elected?
We have, the only thing that we could figure out is if we did elections, we would have to have each neighborhood hold their own election. And we would need to do that during like November, December, January, which is why we moved my presentation up. And then they would have to hold their own meetings where they hold their own election and then let us know who was elected. And I would try to be at every meeting. We thought of them coming, doing it in a district meeting, but then you have to split each neighborhood up and try to find a different place of the city for them to hold an election and have someone there to kind of watch the election. So, yes.
Well, Ed, for a little bit of history here, um, that, you know, the, this was one of the most controversial and difficult decisions, I think, that we made when we revised the program. I, I personally think it's probably the most important decision we made, even though I understand why it creates uh, feelings and why it maybe can be perceived as sort of anti-democratic in some way. Our goal was to increase participation and neighborhood engagement and decrease the tensions that surrounded some of these elections that were very, very difficult to manage. Uh, for all of those neighborhoods, they were very unevenly performed, uh, consistently unevenly performed. Meaning in some cases, uh, they didn't happen or they happened with three people or in some cases people would dispute them because they said they didn't get properly noticed. And then there was, you know, neighborhood elections where somebody would stack the room and just invited all kinds of problems and shenanigans that we felt like created the mis- in misperception that these were officially elected people. And so I, I am strongly opposed to, to revising this for that very reason. If we, if we go down that road, we go right back to where we were, uh, which creates all those same problems. Um, if there's some sort of, uh, you know, flexible model here where we can allow, uh, I mean, I, I thought we sort of did this anyway, but if people want to do a signature campaign to nominate somebody, uh, they can still do that, right? Um, we would, we would take.
Yeah, I mean, you can always do that or we can have that be part of the process, that you need this many signatures.
I mean, I'm happy to do anything that helps people to promote someone they really want to be considered. Um, I don't think we've had any evidence as far as I know that we've ever made it an appointment that, that upset people because they felt like somebody else was excluded. We've been pretty inclusive all along. Our goal was just simply to take away the bureaucratic uh, responsibility of managing all those elections, which created uh, perceptual, I mean, it's interesting because the perception that this is sort of undemocratic was also what we were getting all along, uh, with the other program. It was like, why are you guys? Uh, you know, essentially knighting people through a process that doesn't have any sort of, you know, we don't notice, uh, every neighborhood through proper mailing to say that these, these people are, I mean, if we want to go down that route fully, then we ought to be able to, we ought to be willing to fund uh, a full election process. But I think we're, we're asking you to do an extraordinary amount of work if we go back in that direction. I'm very pleased with the level of engagement we've had. I think we're moving in the right direction in terms of a trajectory. Um, and if we can find ways to keep inviting more people to be involved, um, I'm, I'm mostly concerned about not so much the, the board members, it's the people who come to that meeting who aren't elected or appointed at all, who want to feel like this is a place where I can get engaged and I'm not already marginalized because I'm not someone with power. That's, that's what these meetings are for. They're for engagement, they're for passing along of information. And they're not intended to be, uh, they're, they're, they're helpful for us to get citizen feedback. But as you already pointed out, if, we still seem to even have the perception still that the more important meeting to go to is that one.
Right.
As opposed to going directly to their duly elected, uh, representatives and, and talking to, to us about them. So I, I just, I'm afraid we're gonna, we're gonna invite a lot of trouble. So I, I feel pretty strongly that, that we should just stay the course, um, although like I say, I'm open to, um, you know, some method that helps people have more say in the appointment process. If that, if, if, if someone has some good creative ideas for how to do that.
Some feedback we've gotten on the appointment process was, um, when we did it originally, they felt like it was rushed, which it was.
I do remember that, yes.
We had to have everyone appointed by the first of January and I didn't get hired till mid-November.
Yeah.
So it was rushed. So, um, another reason why I'm coming here now is that we do decide to do appointments. We can do a longer time on open city hall. A lot of them have asked that um, people applying be interviewed by the council. That's something they brought up. Other people have brought up getting the signatures from their neighbors. Um, one thing I will say, when we first switched to the neighborhood district program, we had a neighborhood chair that was vehemently opposed to the new program and took a lot of people away with them. And when I posted about, just recently, I posted on Facebook about, hey, you know, we're looking for people to be, um, to apply to be in the neighborhood program. And he wrote a comment that was super positive. Saying, this is a great program. You, I totally, you know, urged people to apply. And I thought that was a huge turnaround because I think there was this fear of the appointment process that I don't think happened. I, I think the counselors did a really fair job appointing people of different points of view.
All right, we have many comments. First, Councilor McKay, then Councilor Garrett, then Councilor Hoben. Yes, here's our order.
Okay, um, I think you've done amazing, Rachel. And the success of this program is do so much to yourself. We're so grateful. Um, I think that I, it's been, we've gotten the communication down, right? You're reaching a lot of people, the open rate of your emails, the people showing up at the meetings. Um, it's going really, really well. Um, I, I stand by my original thought on this. And not to go all elected, but I want to do one appointed, one elected for each neighborhood.
Okay.
For speech.
Neighborhood issue. Counselor Garrett.
Um, I agree, Rachel. Thank you for your, um, great work on this. And um, a shout out too to the department representatives that come. I think that adds so much credibility to what we're doing when Vern comes. And, and does a presentation on traffic in their area. It makes it seem, um, so credible, what they're doing. Um, like George, I would be interested in some refinement of the process. Um, and I didn't hear anyone either, um, express frustration that someone wasn't appointed. But I heard someone in one meeting say, that's our representative? When did I choose that person? They, they were just, they weren't sure how the process happened. I think some refinement, you know, would be helpful there. Um, and I wanted to ask also Rachel, um, how is your Zoom audience? It probably varies from district to district.
Yeah, so we, we get our largest Zoom audience is from District One, the northeast area.
Ten people?
Um, yeah, usually about ten. Sometimes if it's a, uh, contention's item, I'll have up to fifty on Zoom. So a lot of people really like the Zoom option.
Uh, so I'm, I'm not supportive of all, going back to elections. The elections were a mess. They were controversial, they were, they created all this tension. And honestly, I don't feel any of that at the, in the neighborhood program now, as far as I'm aware. I feel like it's actually going really well and I'm super happy with the results. So for me, what, what problem is, is an election solving? I think it's just gonna create more problems again. We're gonna go back to it. I know there's a few council members that weren't here when we were going through all that, but the elections were a mess. I do not want to get into the election business. I'm gonna be very adamant about that. And as much as to say, mark this, mark my, mark this down in your calendar, I hundred percent agree with George on all of this. I know, I know. But I just, guys, it's going really well. Participation's up, things are going smoothly. I don't feel like the appointment process has been abused at all. Um, I don't, I don't even want to like tweak the appointment. I don't want a hybrid. I think it's going great. My personal opinion, thanks.
Counselor Blockton and then Counselor Christensen.
So I disagree with it all. I think that it needs to be back to elections. I think if it were going to be a problem with elections, we'd see problems right now with the elected district chair, vice chair and secretary. Right now, we're not seeing any of that. And right now, you don't have the autonomy of the neighborhoods as it is more of a group. So I would like to see that just because of the same things, right? Um, there obviously is some concern, or they wouldn't be asking us to interview people to have a board. I think that the people that are there at the meetings, whether it's five, ten, twenty, whoever's there, they can vote in who they want to represent them because they know them. They know how they will work. We've had problems with our board with some of them that don't work well. Um, they've said, you know, there's some of them that probably shouldn't be there. And then there's some that do work really well for their neighborhoods. And I think that's, that's great to put on them. And if we do a hybrid system where you have one appointed and one, you know, that might be a little bit harder on the go-getter. But I think that's, that's a more fair way to put it. And like I said before, I, I never did see an issue with it. Obviously I fought really hard and, um, we're having still the elections. And if we had a problem, I think that we'd see it by noon.
Counselor Christensen.
I would just encourage us not to, uh, course correct so quickly. Uh, I, let's, let's give it more time. Instead of micromanaging every quarter, um, you have seen some very impressive results. Uh, I was actually very critical of the changes that were made. And I, I like the results that I'm seeing. And I think it's just premature to make uh, uh, changes right now. Let's let it run a year and let's come back to it.
Yeah, we don't want to fall on the same trap as the state legislature that Cam just told us about where they're, they're passing twenty new laws when they haven't even implemented the first one and seen how that goes. So I like the idea of having, we are seeing good results. Um, we are seeing more participation. We have had problems getting all neighborhoods represented within districts. And I think going to an election would only compound the difficulty in trying to get representation for some of those neighborhoods. Um, if, if we were to modify this at all, I, it would be something like, you know, having some sort of neighborhood show of support for the applicants that we're considering. Um, and that can be, you know, email or, or speaking at the meetings or, or whatever it is. We are seeing that already. But formalizing that, I think would be a good way to get that input. We've been, we want to listen to the neighborhood, but we just are still dealing with the, the same situation that some neighborhoods don't have the capacity or people with the capacity to do this volunteer work. And if, if we can somehow put a noose around somebody and pull them in as, as an appointee. It, it, yeah, I mean, I was a very reluctant acting neighborhood chair. Cause I was at a meeting where there were, I don't know, maybe eight of us. And I'm like, well, I'll agree to be a vice chair. I'm not gonna be the chair. I, I can't do that. And home dude went AWOL after a month. And so Officer Nysonger, you know, started calling me and emailing me and saying, you've got to have our neighborhood meetings. You're it, step up. And so then I was the acting chair because chair was gone. And I care about my community and serving, so I did that. And I, I think I did well. I did as well as I could representing our neighborhood. But that is a terrible election process. And I, I agree with my colleagues, George and Travis, that I do not want to go back to anything that would resemble that. And if we're even electing one of the neighborhood positions, I'm worried that it's going to be a group of three to eight people who we can gather together in a neighborhood. I think we get better things by putting the applicants on open city hall and asking for neighborhood input. You know, or soliciting the emails, like, these are the persons who have put themselves forward to do this. Let us know what you think. I think that is a cleaner and better process. And it doesn't force people to just show up at one place and one time to do it, which is really, really hard. And one thing that, um, Rachel didn't mention, but we've got the Zoom meeting, but we're also recording these and people are, for some reason, watching. And people are, for some reason, watching these meetings on-
It's me.
Is it you?
Every single one.
Yeah, so people are watching them after the fact. The delay time, the lag is really, really important. And so I wouldn't want to do an election that is imposing more barriers to participation than our meetings have right now. I like that open, open period. So those are my thoughts on that. Other thoughts on this issue? Yes, Councilor Christensen.
Could we just consider waiting for a year?
We can consider whatever you want, sir.
Coming back to this, um, then just with more data, uh, I, I just love the changes that you've made. And I think uh, your, even your course correction in terms of the things that, you know, do we need developers there? It's just so helpful. This is so divisive. And I think we just run the risk of just stirring the hornet's nest unproductively. I'm okay stirring it, but unproductively, nah, let's not do that.
Yeah.
I mean, it would, I know some people feel like it needs to be changed. Is there an appetite to wait for a year? So that basically just gave us a year and a half running it this way and then revisiting it.
I would prefer we act now. I mean, I went from a third to a half almost, right? Of people wanting that to happen. And at least in my district, we're getting some that are like, oh gosh, you know, I am the only one trying to pull my weight, which, you know, it, it happens. And it'd just be nice for them to get a go-getter that would really want to say, hey, I'm gonna, I want to be elected, even if it's about three people, four, four people or five people. Because when you, some of them that are appointed aren't stepping up either. And you're left with an insurmountable task. Man, I'm going to say like, Rachel, I, I didn't ask and I didn't, wasn't elected to be area rep. I fell into that after Beth was going through all of her personal stuff. And I stepped into the task, into that, right? Um, so it, it's not, it's not terrible. Like I said, I stepped up to the task when I got thrown, do the zone change, right? Um, and I was elected as my neighborhood chair. I was reluctant to want to do that, but I was elected to do it and I did it. So I, I really think it needs to change because it is increasing.
Councilor Garrett.
I didn't say changed. I said refine. I'd be fine waiting a little more time though. I think at one point we talked about doing this in October of this year.
Yes.
Maybe we wait till the end of the year.
Well, no, we don't have the time then.
And that was, that was the essence of my comment.
Right.
We didn't want to do it in October because that's too late to implement anything. And we could do it the first of the year. I'm just thinking, and if we did it a year from now, we just have more data to look at.
Yeah.
We, we brought that earlier because if we waited till October, we would have the same problem we had originally, where we would do a work meeting, maybe a second work meeting, go to the council. By then it's November, we're scrambling, trying to set up elections, we're trying to do appointments, so we wanted to decide earlier.
Councilor McKay.
Um, it's already been a year and a half. I definitely want to get rid of the fee waiver issue sooner than later.
Yeah.
I'm fine waiting on the elections appointments. I think, I liked your reasoning, Rachel, on getting rid of the developer thing. I think that's wise and would clean things up and help us because you're taking care of that now.
Right.
So, you know, I think, I think there's things worth doing sooner than later.
Hey, Councilor Handley.
Well, I, I sort of want to echo this request for more time, but I, I'm open to, you know, I like Gary's word refine. I'm, I'm open in the interim. If, if there are refinements that you um, as staff would identify as being helpful to increase participation and engagement and help people feel more reassured about the process. And we can continually work on making sure we understand what the purpose of the board is and then the role of the board members, you know, so that people don't have that confusion or frustration when they come to the meetings. Again, that's the, that's the feeling I want to rego, I want to respect is I want anyone to show up and feel like this is my me, this is my opportunity to have an equal voice. And now I understand what's going on a little bit more. Now I can go directly to the council with my concerns. So um, a- anyway, I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason why we couldn't refine anything between now and next year. But I do think if we're going to contemplate any major changes of this, at least I'm, I'm not addressing the other issues. I'm, I'm fine about voting on the fee waiver and on the um, the developer issue right now. But as far as the election versus appointment thing, I think we ought to, we ought to just postpone that uh, decision. And if you want to come back with any refinements in the meantime, I think, I personally would be open to that. I don't, because I don't think that creates all the problems that we've been just addressing. That we're kind of creating more confusion or whatever.
And on refinements for something like feedback and stuff like that, would that even require any council action or change to code? You can just handle that administratively right now and let us know what you've done and what the effects have been.
Right, if we want to do a longer Open City Hall period, if we want them to get signatures, if we want um, them to come and introduce themselves at their neighborhood district meetings saying, hey, I've applied. I'm interested, um, you know, please give your feedback on Open City Hall. And, you know, anything like that, if you want, set up interviews or anything like that. We did do it before when we asked more questions on the application. That was a refinement we did last year. So there's something like that that you want me to do?
All right, um, so we are, are running short on time. Do you have additional updates for us or?
I, I don't.
Okay.
Talk about this tonight, right?
No, this is just-
No, this is just work reading. So at this point, it would be useful for the council to consider motions to give our council staff guidance. Um, three different areas that they've asked for guidance are the fee waiver or neighborhood seeking amendment. The, do we need a guidance on the development notices?
We, that's, that's not in the code. So if you are okay with not adding that to the code?
Is, is there a general sense of okayness? There's a general sense of okayness. And then-
See how she read the movement.
Uh, on the, the elections versus appointments. So we will entertain any motions that counselors like to make on those things at this time. Councilor Hovind.
I make a motion that we do away with the fee waiver and that we don't make any changes currently to the elections. Does that work, Brian?
All right, do we have a second?
Can we split those up?
Sure.
Okay, restate your first motion.
Uh, make a motion that we do away with the fee waiver.
I'll second that. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Do we have council discussion? All right, we will now take a vote on the motion. Councilor Bogdan.
No.
Councilor Christensen.
Sorry.
What's our motion?
To, to do away with the fee waiver.
So they can, like how the ADU thing happened or Becky's, that they, that we subsidize them doing a change as opposed to-
We will no longer offer, allow the neighborhood chairs to request the fee waiver.
The language of the motion, so to do, to not have a fee waiver.
That is authorized by the district or neighborhood chef.
Meaning they either pay or they get the council to support.
Yeah, I think they should pay.
So yes, so that is a yes. Okay. We're not there. We're not there. All right, Councilor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilor Handley.
No.
Councilor Hovind.
Yes.
Councilor McKay.
Yes.
Councilor Whipple, yes. So that vote is five to two and it passes. So that means that council staff will come back with ordinance language for us to consider. Will that be at another work meeting or that we'll do that?
I don't know that we need a work meeting. It's basically just going to be a peeling the sections.
Just do it, perfect.
So.
All right, we've now moved the fee waiver situation. Do we have any other motions at this time?
Here's Travis.
Councilor Hovind.
Make a motion that we don't make any changes to the elections and appointments or, sorry, to the appointment system that we have for the neighborhood district program.
Okay, all right, is that at this time or is that just period?
Uh,
Well, I would, I would, I would just weigh in and say, I mean, he said at this time of earlier, I don't think it makes a difference.
Okay.
Uh, right, because whether he says that or not, it doesn't prevent somebody from coming back and base that.
Perfect.
So the only, the only thing is if he wanted to say, it's a, it's a different motion to say until such and such a date when we ask for, you know, another proposal or another review. But, so I think the language just kills it until somebody else brings it up.
All right, do we have a second on the motion to make no changes to our appointment process at this time? That's seconded by Councilor Christensen. Do we have any discussion on this motion? Let's do a vote then. Councilor Christensen. Councilor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilor Handley.
Yes.
Councilor Hovind.
Yes.
Councilor McKay. Councilor Whipple is yes and Councilor Bogdan.
No.
All right, that vote is also five to two and it passes. All right.
So just to make sure I have this clear, so the only thing I'm bringing back to the night meeting is the fee waiver.
Yes.
Yeah, anything else you just clarify? That, that doesn't mean we may not want to revisit how that process happens. So who gets interviewed? How many do we interview? Do we have a subcommittee? I mean, all those things could still take place.
Yeah.
We're just not doing the elections in the, in the-
Yeah, just not doing elections this fall.
And, and this was going to be one of the comments I was going to make a minute ago, but really, in, in my view, we're kind of talking about two different things. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel, but I think staff feels empowered to, regardless of any motions are made here, if they see something that they think is not working and they want to come ask you for a fix, I think they feel empowered to do that anytime. The second thing is that they're trying to be responsive to previous discussions and make sure that there's not something that you want them to do that they're not doing. And so if they're, you know, those kind of things, we need motions on to understand that there's something else you're asking for. But as far as like constantly vetting the process and telling you with suggestions, I think we all feel like we can do that anytime.
Right. If there's no objection, we will now adjourn the Provost Municipal Council Work Meeting by unanimous consent.